Good evening and welcome. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on December 12th, 2024. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 25th day of November, 2024. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and the Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. When the time comes, those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. An appropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Ms. Sacks? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, announcements, um, just a quick one from me, uh, and then maybe Justin has, uh, something as well. Um, but I just wanted to point out it being December that the nomination committee, uh, will undertake its work to nominate, um, officers of the board for 2025. Um, the committee is Alvin McGowan, Chair, Julie Capizoli, Nat Bodigheimer, and Pallavi Nuka. So, um, uh, you all can meet in whatever forum you wish, by phone, by Zoom. I think you can deliberate by email, uh, under the law. So is that correct, Mr. Muller?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so thank you in advance for your service on the nomination committee. Um, any other announcements, Justin, or members of, uh, the board or staff?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, thank you, and good evening, uh, members of the board and members of the public. Um, the only announcement I have is that we expect, um, that the council, uh, the HPC has chosen a consultant for, uh, the design guidelines that have been talked about for some time now, um, for historic districts. Uh, and we expect that, uh, consultant contract to be on the council's meeting, which is next Thursday night, same night as our meeting. So please still come to this one. Um, but it's next Thursday at 6:00 PM. Uh, and that's just, uh, another example of something that's within the master plan, um, as a, a recommendation, uh, related to land use, uh, similar to other things that are underway, uh, such as the environmental resource inventory, um, a, uh, look at our signage regulations with the consultant and a few other things.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and the record should show, um, Council President, uh, Sacks is present. Um, any other announcements from anyone? Okay, on to subcommittee reports. Justin, did you want to?
Sure, uh, not quite a report, um, just scheduling, uh, the site plan committee is meeting on Wednesday to discuss an application at the Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority, uh, up in the northeast corner of town. Um, and that would just be for classification, uh, as that application will come back to the board, uh, since it includes variances. We expect that, uh, probably January or February, probably more so February. Um, and then the landscape committee is meeting on, uh, the 19th, which is Thursday, um, to discuss, uh, 112 to 116 Prospect Ave. Uh, those are the ones, the historic buildings that were relocated across Prospect Avenue, uh, and just the final landscape plan for that one. And, uh, that's on the municipal calendar that's open to the public for anyone that's interested.
Great. And of course, we have a meeting, uh, Thursday night as well.
Thursday night meeting, um, is it starting at 7:30 or seven? I know there was a discussion at some point, maybe just at the staff, to push it back to 7:30 because some people could not make it at seven, but...
Yeah, we have other business that I think we can hand. I think we're starting at seven. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And I don't anticipate, as you'll see in the agenda tomorrow, uh, that we will be able to hear the application, uh, that was carried to that date. That was one of the shopping center that you'll actually see part of it in a resolution in a minute. Um, but we still will have the, uh, uh, conversation about adopting new bylaws.
Okay, good. minutes, we have two sets of minutes. I'm skipping over findings of fact number five because we have resolutions and findings of fact number seven on the agenda. So, um, so let's do minutes and then we will do the resolutions. Um, we have, uh, minutes from February 15th and from March 21st, both regular meetings. Um, any suggestions or edits to the minutes from February 15th?
I was just going to advise that Mr. Bodigheimer, Ms. Sacks, and Mr. Taylor were not present that evening.
I'll approve the minutes for February 15th.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Capizoli, seconded by Mr. Cohen. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Thank you. Um, next we have minutes for March 21st, 2024, also a regular meeting. Any, um, comments, edits, suggestions that if not, would someone like to move them?
I'll move those too.
Moved by Julie Capizoli, seconded by Owen O'Donnell.
Oh, when you were not present, I'm sorry. I should have said something.
And seconded by Alvin, Alvin McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
I'm abstaining. That was also absent.
Yes, thank you.
Um, good, thanks very much. And I know Carrie is working diligently to catch us up on the minutes and sometimes it's slow going, but she's working on it. Uh, next up, we have three resolutions. The first, um, is, oh, okay, being carried to, uh, the, to next week. Um, do I still need to read? The, well, I'll read it anyway. The first is Stephen Wasco, minor subdivision and lot line adjustment at three, 537 and 561 Stockton Street, file number P 2323-368-M-S. And, um, we're carrying that to next week. Uh, next up, we have, um, the resolution for the Institute for Advanced Study. Um, this preliminary and final site plan with variances at One Einstein Lane, uh, slash Olden Lane, file number P 2424-467-P. Um, and I think we may choose to carry that one as well. Um, Mr. Cohen had some concerns that I share, so David, if you would articulate those, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, just, um, one piece which isn't too material to this, to the, to the application, but which I'd like to correct in the record is, um, the way that historic treatment of the historic aspects of the building is, you know, we had a fair amount of discussion about it at the meeting. The applicant made great efforts to respect the architectural integrity of the building, and it didn't make it into the resolution, so I'd like to add some language, uh, regarding that. And then the second thing, which is more substantive, is the condition relating to bicycle parking. You know, talks about them doing a campus plan, which is great, which is what we agreed to, but it really only alludes to the quantity of bike parking campus-wide and doesn't really talk about the design of the bike parking. And people may remember that there was a fair amount of discussion about the, um, the fact that a lot of the bike parking is not compliant with our design requirements. But they specifically, it specifically talks about that. David?
Go ahead, Jerry.
It specifically talks about design in that condition. It talks about design being required to be addressed in their annual report, but it doesn't make any reference to the fact that much of the bike parking that is existing on site is non-compliant from a design standpoint, and that I, I just think it's helpful to be specific about the expectation that the report should include a plan for bringing non-compliant bike parking into compliance, uh, as part of the plan. And so, yeah, I, I did notice that, Jerry, but I felt like it would be helpful to the applicant as they prepare the plan to be more specific about what design aspects are being asked for. Okay. And so I, I was hoping we could push it for a week just because between these two concerns I had, I wanted to be able to work with you on the language a little bit, um, not do it, you know, um, uh, as, as a committee at the hall.
Sounds good.
Yeah, work with me. Is that what you're saying, Dave? Yeah, we usually do, which is you do the first draft and I comment on that and, yeah, that sounds very good to me.
Okay.
Uh, just time-wise, um, I think we'll make every effort to get it out tomorrow. Uh, you know, there's a little tight timeline with the back-to-back meetings that we don't usually have. So we'll make every effort to get it out tomorrow on the usual Friday that we get things out to the board. Um, but if it's not, Madam Chair, are you okay with us sending that out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, or, well, maybe not Wednesday?
Monday, Tuesday.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um, all right, and the third resolution is Princeton Eden's Princeton Shopping Center signage. Um, this preliminary and final major site plan with variances, facade signage only, at 301 North Harrison Street, file number P 2424-506-P. And there are some minor edits to be made there. Um, do you want to list them, Mr. Cohen, or are you just?
David, I wonder if I could, I wonder if I could read some changes that I proposed to incorporate. See if that works for you.
Okay, great.
This would be on page, well, it's on the eight of my draft, but it's where, it's a list of all the things we're expecting with respect to these, um, identification signs. Um, the fourth bullet says sign D1. Uh, I would have it read now, show the exact location and show the arrows that some traffic will be straight and other traffic will turn. And then with respect to the next bullet, sign D2, show the exact location and center it on the incoming traffic lanes. Yeah, I, that captures what my, uh, comments were. Okay, and I guess D3 should also, we should, it should show the exact location. I mean, it refers to the fact that it's being relocated from what was originally proposed, and that was what we discussed. But I just want them to come back and give us an approximate location for that. Let's have the exact location of all three of them. Yep.
Good, thank you. So with those amendments, um, or minor edits, would someone like to move those min, or excuse me, that resolution for the signage moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by?
Bodigheimer.
Nat Bodigheimer, thank you. Uh, um, let's do a roll call.
Mr. Bodigheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
I abstain.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. O'Donnell, see there?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, next we have an application from PIP Commercial LLC. This is a major site plan at 4042 North Tulane Street, block 27.02, lot 27, file number P 2424-511-P. And, um, the deadline under the municipal land use law was the 5th of December. It's, this, uh, extension has been granted to, um, December 31st. But we're going to handle this tonight, I hope.
Proof of publication and service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks very much, Jerry. Um, Justin Lesko, you want to get us started here?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Justin, if you raise your right hand, who else would testify on behalf of?
Oh, yes, um, Derek, Dan Durbermilsky, uh, Dan Weissman.
Yep, if you go, raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Those one affirmed.
I do.
Do.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
And, uh, excuse me, Victor Anosike as well.
Yeah, I, I would have sworn.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Victor, I did not see your, your square.
It's okay.
Um, good, go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll start by sharing my screen, um, which, uh, not surprisingly, I'm showing the subject property using the NJ Map, Partial Explorer map, which is publicly available from Rowan University, and I suppose we'll call this PP1, Jerry?
Yes, correct.
Yep, uh, and let me just make sure you could see that. Yep, uh, so the, uh, subject property is located on North Tulane Street near the center of town. Uh, in my memo, I discussed the development of North Tulane Street a little over 100 years ago, as well as the person it's named for. Uh, though I'll refrain from that unless the board is interested. Um, the subject property is within the RB Residence Business, uh, Zone of the former borough, which does allow for residential buildings with multiple dwellings, like you'll see with this application. The RB Zone was created in the seventies, uh, from parcels, mostly in the R4 Residential Zone. Uh, interestingly, uh, to me at least, the Planning Board voted against the zoning change and the council overrode it as they are allowed to do. Um, before I get into the application before you, I want to summarize previous ones, uh, to add some context, um, at this property. Uh, the board approved an application in March 2022, allowing 14 units and office or retail space, uh, utilizing the Affordable Housing Overlay 1, AHO1. Uh, three of the units would have been designated affordable, and the building that was on the site was required to be retained to utilize the AHO1. Uh, that building dated back to at least 1918. Uh, nearly half of that building, which was required just to utilize the AHO, uh, was demolished. Um, a stop-work order was issued as this was also done without any municipal permits. Uh, and then staff worked with the property owner to chart a path forward, uh, to utilize the overlay, uh, by saving the remainder of the building. This could have been requested, uh, through a modification of the approved application before the Planning Board, uh, which the property owner did submit to the Planning Office in August 2023. Uh, however, uh, in October 2023, the property owner then rescinded that application and filed a new one to demolish the remainder of the building. Um, and obviously, since the building was required to be retained to utilize the AHO1, demolishing the building really took the AHO1 off the table, uh, for this property. And by February of this year, the whole building was demolished. Um, the property is located within the Princeton Historic District, District on the state and national registers of historic places, but it was not and is not located within any designated local historic districts. Uh, our previous master plan listed a central residential historic district, which we had applied to this property, uh, when reviewing it. However, suggested districts do not provide any protections from demolition, um, and neither do the state, just being on the state and national one. Only the, the designated local ones, uh, make those requirements kick in for, from our municipal ordinance. So, uh, the historic preservation element of our current plan lists the state and national, uh, Princeton Historic District as one that should be evaluated for, uh, potential local designation. So before I move on, are there any questions about either the timeline or the history or the, the, uh, historic status and demolition? Or should I just continue?
It's like you can go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, so just moving on, the Firestone Library Bus Stop is within walking distance of the subject property across Nassau Street, which is just off my screen. Um, several lines of Princeton University's, uh, Tiger Transit stop there, which are free and open to the public. The Free Muni Bus stops there as well, and the NJ Transit 606 bus line stops there. Uh, the 606 is the line that goes from Hamilton to Robbinsville to Trenton to Lawrenceville, and then through Princeton up to the shopping center. Uh, there are metered parking spaces on North Tulane Street across from the subject property, as well as on Spring Street. Uh, and obviously, the Spring Street Garage is adjacent, uh, to the west of this property as well. The Cop Cycles Building and the gravel lot adjacent to it are to the south of the subject property, uh, and residences and commercial properties are on North Tulane and Spring Streets. So the proposal you'll hear about shortly is for a three-story, 35-foot-tall building with a crawl space and a roof deck, no basement. Uh, it has four two-bedroom units and six parking spaces. The parking spaces are two, are in two areas, um, five are to the south of the proposed building, one of which is a compact space, and the sixth is to the north of the building behind a gate and is described as ADA accessible. Uh, three of the four units are each on the first and second floors with staircases. Uh, two of these, uh, also have private yards, uh, just outside of them, uh, and the third one is adjacent to, uh, what's listed as a shared open space, uh, yard. Uh, the fourth unit is mostly on the third floor of the building, uh, with a staircase, uh, and an elevator to it, a private staircase and elevator. Um, it includes four balconies, uh, private balconies, two of them are on the third floor alongside the living area, and then two more on the second floor, access from that interior staircase, um, and it also includes access to the private roof deck. Nine trees are, uh, being removed or have been removed, um, which would require 11 replacement trees. Uh, six are proposed to be planted on site as part of this application with a financial contribution for the remainder to the, uh, uh, Shetree Trust Fund. Um, and a landscape plan, uh, has also been provided. Um, so that's about it for my brief introduction, um, but I do want to note that staff has major concerns with the ADA space, uh, and frankly, if it works at all for people with disabilities. Um, we also have concerns about the shared open space behind one of the units, uh, as it looks almost identical to the private open space behind another one of the units, uh, and it very well may function as private space or even be marketed as that. Um, and, uh, you know, I look forward to hearing the applicant's presentation and their responses to, to these concerns and others. Um, though I will say, I don't know if, if this application can be amended on the fly or alternatively, um, if variances will need to be requested. Um, I guess we'll figure that out through the discussion. Uh, Mr. Weissman and Mr. Bridger are here with their engineering and zoning report. Mr. Anosike is here with his traffic engineering report, and Mr. Durbermilsky is here with his landscape architectural report. Um, so for now, I'll hold my comments. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lesko. Um, so I remember, uh, reading a, a few, uh, suggestions, um, offered up by Mr. Durbermilsky and some, uh, corrections, clarifications, suggestions made in the, um, planning and, or excuse me, the zoning and engineering memo. I see Ryan nodding your head, so I hope that you will, uh, address all of those or one of your, uh, expert witnesses will. Um, there were also some good suggestions from the Environmental Commission. Um, Dan, Dan, and Derek, do any of you or Mr., uh, or Victor, do you have anything you need? You think the board needs to hear before we hear from the applicant, any real, real red flag kind of issues that cause you concern?
No.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I do, I do have, uh, concerns, uh, like, uh, Justin said, I have concerns with the, um, location of the ADS space.
Right.
Um, there is a, a fence and a wall. I think there's a wall that blocks the accessible aisle.
Yeah.
And then the gate, uh, I don't know how the operation will allow somebody with a wheelchair or somebody who is this, uh, who has some kind of impairment to access the parking lot without, uh, opening the gate. And also, um, the turning template that was presented did not show how a vehicle will come out of that space into Tulane. Uh, it seems like, uh, the only way will be a backing maneuver onto the road. And for that space that is designated for, uh, ADS space, uh, it could be a van. And, uh, I have concerns about the, uh, maneuver and also, uh, the guardian fence that is, uh, to the, I guess, to the east of it. Uh, I also have concerns with that.
Okay.
So those are, those are the things that I have for now.
Okay, all right, we'll make sure that they, that they address those, um, specifics in your, as you've articulated, um, here and also in your memo. Um, Mr. Weissman? Anything quickly before we go to the applicant?
Yes, very quickly. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Um, just a clarification, uh, there is two de minimis exceptions to residential site improvement standards, um, one of which, uh, is for the number of spaces that are, are provided. Uh, eight are required per those standards. Six total spaces are being provided. Uh, the engineering zone report notes that five are. Those five that are provided meet the, the size standards. Um, as Mr. Anosike had pointed out in his report, one space is compact and would need an exception for the size of that space. Uh, so the clarification from the report is that, uh, six spaces are provided, so the de minimis exception is for two spaces. And then there's also a de minimis exception for the size of that space. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Mm-hmm, thank you. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
All right. Thank you very much. Um, good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Um, my name is Ryan Kennedy from the law firm Stevens and Lee, uh, here tonight for PIP Commercial LLC, the owner-applicant of this project. Want to appreciate everyone's efforts here, particularly during the, the holiday season to, to meet, uh, all your professionals for providing their feedback and for you, uh, being here tonight. On the outset, just to reiterate, reiterate what Mr. Lesko indicated earlier with the history, uh, the applicant really does appreciate, there was a long period of time, uh, of working with staff to try to make the prior project work. Um, of timing-wise, and ultimately, you know, does send its apologies for the way ultimately the construction happened. Uh, it's not how they normally operate. Uh, they relied on a DCA approval and not waiting for the municipal approval for the demolition, and ultimately, very appreciative of the town's professionals and staff for all of the efforts attempting to, to figure out a way to, to make that project work. Ultimately, with the time lapse, uh, and changing economics, we're here with a different project now. Uh, but again, want to express our sincere, uh, appreciation, uh, from everyone in, in Princeton that did their best over the course of a good year to try to figure out how to, how to make that work. Um, we're here for a four-unit, uh, compliant project, uh, without any variances. Uh, as Mr. Lesko and the professionals laid out, there are a couple of issues that we, we found out about, uh, uh, in, in recent weeks and we're happy to address here tonight, uh, particularly, uh, the ADA accessibility of the space. Uh, we've taken a look at that and have a, uh, I think a very simple solution to, to clarify and, and remove the obstacles essentially. So the, uh, uh, the users of that space will have no problem getting in or out and looking forward to walking the board through that. We'll also go through the open space, uh, requirement, where it is and what eat, how each piece of it functions, whether it's a private balcony for a unit or the shared open space, uh, particularly the space that Mr. Lesko indicated that is adjacent to the parking area. And we do envision that to be the kind of guest space. If you're having guests for a barbecue, that's kind of the place where you would congregate. It's close to and accessible from the parking area, but we'll go through and, and explain how that works. We've got three professionals that you'll hear from tonight. Uh, our architect, Marina Rabina, our civil engineer, uh, Jim Kamalik, and we brought in, uh, George Jakumar. He's our traffic, uh, expert to talk about the, the, the turning motions. When we met with staff before submitting this, uh, we had extensive discussions about getting in and out of that, um, the five-part, uh, excuse me, the five-space portion of this site and put a lot of work into making sure that we could show that. We'll talk through the ADA space as well, but our goal was to make sure that we could do this in a way that made sense. Was to make sure that we could do this in a way that made sense uh and had the most limited interruptions. Uh, to the sidewalk and uh we we hope you'll agree that the the turning templates and the the work we've done there. Uh, proves that out. Uh, there, we're we're excited to include. Uh, at least two make-ready parking spaces because this is a four-unit building. Um. It is a little interesting with the makeup of that few spaces about who is going to have an electric car and we're. Uh, willing to talk with the board about putting more in or where, but want to make sure we've got the flexibility that we're not excluding. Tenants that don't have electric vehicles just yet with the number of parking spaces that we have. Uh, also. Um, yes, Madam Chairwoman, uh, uh, some good uh catches, uh, in particular, Mr. Dobremisky's report about some. Species that should be and will be uh substituted out from non-natives to native plants. Absolutely, we'll do that. Uh, excellent suggestions about um root protection apparatus uh for the some of the things along the street. All great ideas that we're happy to endorse and and include uh in the in the final compliance uh project here.
Ryan, is there anything in Mr. Dobremilsky's report that you objected to?
Uh, I'll note, the first comment was just, we really wish there would be more trees. Um, we wish to. Uh, eh eh, we'll, we'll certainly work with him if we can find other places. The original, the the the, based on the number of tree replacement required, we've already proposed a partially uh a a payment in lieu. Um, but beyond that, all the technical uh requests that he's done, uh, we're we're uh in agreement with.
Okay.
Uh, I'll also just note then, before we get into our presentation, uh. With the open space for for the users and and occupants here, we've proposed. There actually is a significant reduction in impervious coverage from the the current um state of the site or the prior use. And we're, we're happy to be able to introduce that uh net reduction in in coverage uh for uh. You know, for the environment and for the neighborhood. Um, so with that, um, I don't know if it's easiest to have our three experts uh. Um, sworn in at once.
Yes, please. Yes, and then we'll, we'll qualify them as they testify.
Excellent. And I'm, I'm being corrected, by the way, if I said fourteen hundred is almost nineteen hundred square feet uh of reduction, so I. Thank you for the team for correcting me in my my summary there. Um, so, uh, Mr. Jacomar, uh, Kamalik and Ms. Rubina, I guess we can have you sworn in.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give you the truth?
I do.
No swearing or affirms, could you please state your full name and spell your last names?
Marina Rubina, last name R U B I N A.
George uh JACQUEMART.
Thank you.
And James Kamelak, C H M I E L A K.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, before we introduce our exhibits, uh, Ms. Rubina, if you want to. Um, briefly, I know you've testified before this board many times, but give the board the benefit of your. credentials and confirm your your license, so I can have you accepted as a expert in architecture this evening.
Yes, um, I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and the state of California. And I have a dual master's degree in architectural and structural engineering from the University of California, Berkeley. Um, and I have um testified in front of this and other boards before. Hopefully, that will allow me to be admitted.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you so much, and um, if it's all right, we've submitted some uh slides we'd like to mark as our one exhibit A1. Uh, it is intended to be sixteen slides. Uh, there was a question raised about one of the details so that if. We have put at the end a seventeen slide if we're going to be showing a detail of the ADA sign if that's needed.
And that'd be so long.
Yes.
And Brian, if you could send me a a.
Absolutely.
See that. Thank you.
Marina, um, I think we're looking at slide one here as a rendering of the building. We want to start uh taking us through the project.
Absolutely. So, um, this is the view of um the three-D model that represents our um. Designed for this project where you could see um the left-hand side has the um open parking. And then the building in the middle and then um entrance in the center with um landscaping in front. Uh, thank you. Uh, oh, yeah, keep going. Great. Um, so as we can see here, the site has kind of an interesting shape with a little bit of a corner missing. Um, where it is adjacent to cop cycle. And another interesting feature is how close this is located to um the Spring Street Garage. Um, yep, so we are located in the R B zone of the former borough. And we're the very last property at the end of that zone adjacent to the central business district. And um, this is the site plan. Um, this is slightly modified from the site plan that, uh, this is a site plan and um. Architectural ground floor plan that is a little bit modified from what we submitted to reflect some of the comments that we have received. And thank you so much, Ryan, for zooming in. Um, so as I'm talking, hopefully Ryan will be pointing to things. So, um, on the left-hand side, uh, as you come, you see three parking spaces. Um, to one sort of straight ahead of you and two parking spaces to the right-hand side. And as you could see, we added the EV ready uh notation. Those are the. Um, two parking spaces that Ryan mentioned in his introduction would be EV ready. And then if one were to park in the little parking lot, they would um walk up to the front door. Um, and then there's kind of a little lobby with mailboxes as you come in. And then um, there are four entrances to all individual units that are located. Um, Justin looks like he has a question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry to cut in, Marina. Um, just, uh, can you or Ryan make sure our office gets this since this is modified? Uh, from the other one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the, I will point out the modifications thus far. The modification that I mentioned was the labeling of the EV parking. Uh, so then when you enter, um, the next modification is the color. Uh, coded, the the slightly different green, um, indicating the five-foot passageway that leads you. To the required bike park bu- bike parking. Bike parking has been indicated at that location previously. Uh, so all the four doors to all the four units are off this main central hallway. And they're kind of in a fan pattern, I would say. So all of the three units that have ground floor spaces, they have um living room spaces, kitchens. And bathrooms located um on the ground floor. I'm not one hundred percent sure which report mentioned that these are. Uh, powder rooms, but they're actually bathrooms. They include showers. I'm blinking in one of the reports. They were called half bathrooms, but they're actually full bathrooms. And then these units have individual stairs that lead to the second floor. Unit floor, uh, buh, unit four is a little bit different where the entrance is located off the same hallway. It looks the same. But it's a unit that's located exclusively. It's a flat on the third floor and it has kind of a. Uh, a little bit of a Rapunzel stair going up and um a little individual elevator. Um, because it's kind of difficult to bring groceries all the way up to the third floor. Um, there is off the same hallway, there's a recycling trash room that is located. Thank you for pointing that out. And then that has a side door that's easy to take the trash out um on pickup days. Uh, let's see, so on the right-hand side, the ADA parking shows the car and the striped portion. And um, we had kind of a scheme prior to this presentation where we were relying on somebody having to push a button. And having an electronic operated gate, but it seems like it's just too complicated and. Doesn't seem to be as easy and clear to operate, so we have eliminated that. So there is a very straightforward, we'll show a three-dimensional view of this. Straightforward entrance into the parking spot and um, there's a required um. Three-foot passageways definitely provided from the striped loading area that leads up the ramp. So this is important to note that that. You see where it says twenty-two feet, that's a sloping up to the front door portion. That leads up to the main floor of the building. Um, so that's a modification on this plan. And then the uh third modification in one of the reports. Um, there was a suggestion that we provide a pathway or stepping stones or some kind of uh clear access. Towards the open space which we added. And um, I think that is all the changes on this plan. I don't. Think there were.
I think that that is it, Marina. Though I'll just note um a couple of other comments. Um, uh, want to thank the the professionals for reminding us that uh uh this type of project is eligible for municipal. Uh, garbage pickup rather than private. Um, much appreciated. Um, but with the the intention of the of the applicant is to have. Uh, their employees bring the um buckets out to the street from the trash room here. Uh, and then uh return them. Uh, that was uh one of the, one of the questions and one of the, um, you know, how that would work. And it's uh would be one of the maintenance operations of of the applicant uh for the for the property.
Um, yeah, one other point worth mentioning is right above the street um parking spaces. Uh, David has a question.
David?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Marina. I just, I don't know if I zoned out for a second or if. Your explanation about the handicap parking space was. Uh, not entirely clear, but you've gotten rid of the gate entirely. Is that correct?
This is. There will be, this is. To be continued. That's a really good question. You didn't miss anything. This is just the floor plan version of it. The next slide, Ryan.
All right, okay, I'm sorry.
Jesus. I'm skipping ahead.
Mr. Cowan, you are correct.
We're coming to a more detailed explanation.
We have a slide that will show that more clearly, but uh, we're not glossing over it, but yes, that is, that is the response is to remove the gate entirely.
Okay, and then in regard to your statement, Ryan, about the trash. I understand having the employees take it out to the curb, but it still doesn't answer the question of, will you use? Municipal service or will you have a private hauler who will then take the, collect the trash at the curb?
Uh, my understanding is that uh under the Municipal Services Act, that this this. Size project um would be eligible for municipal services, so if it. We we honestly, I think, didn't realize that at the time of application. Um, uh, if we're eligible for that, we would like to take advantage. Um, it's a detail we'd be happy to work out with the staff, whether it complies or not. Uh, we believe now it does.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yep, and one additional um comment that I would like on this um site plan is that. Although not labeled as shared open space, um, it is shared open space uh where the little stepping stones are. Um, because of the 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 little missing bump out of the property, that particular. Is not allowed to technically be designated because it's not wide enough at that location, but it is de facto. Additional shared open space. We can't call it that because there's no, um. You see that it, where where it kind of narrows down, we can't technically count it, but it is. Okay, thank you. So let's.
Um, I have a couple of quick questions too.
Of course.
Can you confirm how many um? Uh, uh, bikes are accommodated by the indoor bike parking?
So we're required to provide four indoor bike spaces. And we have details of how we're going to accommodate them. So on this plan, we are showing four. In reality, there's room for at least six. But given that the requirement is four interior, um, we're providing those um. Uh, at that location bike, but in reality, we believe that six will fit.
Okay, and at this time, uh, no plan for outside bike parking?
There is. We're supposed to be providing an a exterior. Uh, bike parking where our civil engineer will um show it on the site plan where it goes on the site plan.
Okay, and the um. The trash and recycling room? Um, I think I saw in the plans that you had, you were. There were, there was room in there for four recycling buckets, meaning, oh, I can see five here. Uh, eh anyway, eh are you accommodating or expecting each unit? Will use one recycling bucket?
That's a great question.
Because, because that's never enough for my pretty small household. And I just, I just want to make sure there's room enough in there, you know, to maybe double up those. I I can see on the left side that you have one in front of another, so if there's room for seven or eight. I I think you're, I think the residents will be much better served by trying to. Get everything into one recycling bucket every two weeks.
Yeah, I think we will do um our best to accommodate that. The recycling buckets are. Provided by the municipality, oh, sorry, not the municipality, Mercer County, and they're the size that they are. So we'll, we'll, um, I'm not actually one hundred percent sure how many will they provide per unit. Do they just give you one?
I think you can take as.
You can request.
You can take more than you, I'm sorry, well, maybe David knows the answer to that or Pallavi, since her hand is up, but um. Uh. Uh, you, you can go get a second one if you need it. I don't know whether they give one per household and then. Uh, I, I honestly don't.
I have a new one that they gave and and I have an old one that I'm really lucky and I'm very excited about, but I don't know if. That, that's a.
We'll, we'll, we'll make sure that there's room for many, and there's another comment about room for. Um, if anyone wants to do a curbside organics through a private hauler, that we'd make sure that we'd accommodate that uh as well um in the room.
Yeah, good, great. Um, Ms. Nuka?
Just so you know, the, the new recycling uh buckets from county are much, much bigger than the old.
There. Oh.
Yeah, and um, after Pallavi, I actually have one little comment.
Okay.
Um, I, thank you. I actually just had a question on the, the bike parking again. Um, and. I would just note that it looks like um, these units will probably have more than one. Each unit will have probably two or up to two or three residents. Um, and you know, each individual there would have a bike, so. If it's possible to consider adding more protected bike parking, um, you know. Uh, accu- accounting for, say, two bikes per unit, that would make more sense. Um, but I. I think Marina, you're going to continue with talking about some exterior bike parking as well.
Our um engineer Jim will, when he shows the site plan, yes, he absolutely will.
To that point, I think we'll, we'll work to get as many in there. I think my, my understanding of the. Um, both that we've meet, met the calculations, but the the big concern is make sure the hallways near it are big enough to get a bike in and out, so. Our, our goal will be to, you know, make sure, we're, we're hearing you, that we can get as many bikes in there. Um, uh, that will be compliant, but we've made arrangements in the surrounding area that you can get them in and out, so we'll leave it to Marina to. Work with staff to make sure we can, I would say cram as many bikes in there. We, we, you know, we thought we could even fit six. We'll take another look to see if. That could be a bigger number, uh, in addition to the temporary bike space that's uh our engineer will show us uh upfront.
And there could be some exterior as well, as long as it's undercover.
Right.
That, that's a really good point, that if, if we think this is a good idea, we have that shared space that's not allowed to be called shared space. Um, that one could um put a canopy and have um additional bike parking.
I, I would say if it's exterior, it's important to also have some security.
Great, so I, I'm going to take this time that, like, Ryan made my day today by letting everybody know that um. Number five plastic is now accepted by Mercer County, so I, I.
Wow.
I am so excited. I, I'm, okay, let's just all take a minute. Thank you, Ryan, for letting us know. I, I, I am just beyond excited, so pardon my joy today.
Well, that'll be, we'll need another, another space for all the yogurt buckets uh in a, in a sixth recycling.
I mean, no kidding.
That's. I, I, who, who else is that excited? I don't, I just made my day.
Uh, Marina, me too. Okay, let's keep going.
Anyway, so, okay, so this is a different view of the site. Um, slightly outdated computer model, but pretty close.
And let's, Marina, if you could identify what's like the, the number of the slide you're on.
So this is slide number five. This is a view of the three-D model where it's a little more towards the front, where you see the central entry into the building. And it has uh steps down to the left and ramp down to the right. Um. And this is beginning to show um the landscaping in front. And as you will see, a more open connection to the ADA parking on the right-hand side. I think we're ready for a slight, um, Pallavi still has her hand up. Was there a question?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
By mistake.
Pallavi, do you, there we go, okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay. So, um, I'm going to walk everybody through the second floor plan, which is on the left-hand side right here in this picture. So in green where.
That's what I'd say.
It is slide six. So the open space is satisfied in two ways, we saw a ground floor open space. Interestingly enough, private outdoor space on ground floor actually doesn't seem to be allowed to be included in the calculations. However, we have provided calculations and confirmed with Dan Weisman that this is done correctly. That these balconies on the left hand side marked in green are helping us meet the usable open space requirement. And so as you, everybody inside their unit one, two and three, they have internal stairs as they arrive to the second floor of their unit. They each have two bedrooms and then unit number four continues through their Rapunzel stair, keep going up to their third floor. There was a question in one of the reports, how do you get on the front balcony of unit number four, there's a sliding door there. It's a little bit hard to see, but there it is. So even though it doesn't have a swing, because it doesn't swing, but it's a it's a door that allows one to go on the balcony. On the right hand side of the same slide number six, we have the top unit which is located, it's a flat, it's located on the third floor over the other units. And there are two more balconies on this level. When you arrive on this level, there's open space that main kind of public space of the unit that looks back and then there are two bedrooms that are located kind of in the corners. Interestingly enough, this unit also has a roof deck, but that roof deck is not allowed to be counted toward open space. Can't tell you why, but it's not, but it does exist. So I think that explains this slide. Great, so now we're we're gonna go back one more time, so remember, we had that open space conversation, so we have multiple other open spaces that are not able to be counted under the ordinances as the open spaces, but they are, for example, the entire private yard of unit number two doesn't contribute to anything. I can't really explain why, and neither is the private yard of unit number one. This is slide number seven, correct, so what I was saying to the response that, yeah, that where it says twenty two feet. A little down, a little down. Yeah, there you go, so that could be potentially a good spot if we wanted to introduce a covered and protected additional bike parking, that could be a good spot for it if you ask me and we are way, way under the impervious coverage that currently exists, so this would not cause any issues or any problems in terms of impervious coverage, should we wanted to provide additional covered parking. Okay, hopefully I.
I know we talked about it in the first slide, but then this piece here would be for this is a shared open space be used by visitors and guests on the ground floor or even the the third floor for barbecuing inaccessible from the the parking area for their guests and for parties and things.
Correct, so there, we envision there being a garden wall and we're envisioning there be a garden gate which would not be locked. And it would be see-through, so you could go visit and enjoy the open space.
And I guess the concern to have to have a a gate and and the fence was be more for privacy for the residents rather than to make it seem like it was exclusive to any one of them?
Correct, it's also kind of I feel it's a way to tie the building into the landscape. When the building has kind of sidewalls and things that come out of it, it engages and creates outdoor rooms which actually feel more like livable spaces outside. However, if you think about it, we have the all the units in this building have private outdoor spaces in one shape or another. Where they're not able to be counted as private outdoor spaces for various reasons, like the beautiful roof deck. However, we believe that we're meeting all the required all the requirements with this space as it's sized properly. And lots of people have questions.
Yes, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, are there gates or fences separating the unit one private yard and unit two private yard and the unit two and and open space?
Correct.
There are, okay.
Yes, and the in one of the previous projects, we had somebody, if you guys remember, asked to make sure that there's a way to get from one to the other in case firefighters need to run around. So that's what those gates are there for.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cohen and then Mr. Lesko.
Yeah, so a quick question, I'm guessing the windows in unit one adjacent to the unit one private yard are actually sliders as well?
Haven't decided on that one yet.
Okay, I mean, I think it makes a lot of sense because the private yard will not be very usable for the unit unless they have direct access to it. So that's a suggestion. And then I wanna comment on, you know, Marina's very gentle suggestion that because every unit has private out open space. Perhaps we don't need to be sticklers for the idea that there's this shared open space. And I wanted to support that notion. I mean, honestly, no one is ever going to use that shared open space except the residents of unit three, which directly gives out onto it, because everybody else has their own private open space. Why would they bother to use the shared open space?
Yeah, I mean, you would hope they wouldn't, but if they would, they'd be looking right, that you know, they'd be right next to unit three, which doesn't, which is the only one that on that floor that doesn't have its own private open space, I'm agreeing with you, David, I I think it's I think it's unfair to the people in unit three and it's just a strange.
It's it's a it's a figment of our code. But I think the reality of the situation is gonna be everybody's gonna have their own private open space and it's gonna work fine.
Yeah. Mr. Lesko?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this isn't meant to be a gotcha question, but especially since it was just kind of repeated again. I think Marina, you said every unit has its own private open space, but what about unit three?
Uh, well, I think I did say almost everybody, maybe I didn't. Yeah, so yes, poor unit three is a little bit deficient in that department, yeah.
Got it, so and I certainly agree with Councilman Cohen, but to set this up as a shared open space that we acknowledge is really not shared, I mean, it seems like the relief to be requested would be a variance, not necessarily calling the shared open space and then potentially having, you know, some sort of issue down the line. That's just my two cents.
I think that's right, yeah.
I'll 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 just note that we 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 did notice for this meeting with the ability for the board to grant variances deemed proper, we probably would be agreeable with that if that's the board's preference to do that. We we have designed it as as shared open space and and think it could be used that way, but we we certainly yield to the boards and and perhaps realities view of how that space would be used.
If I could jump in on that, in what circumstances a a variance can be considered by a board when it's not part of the notice? If it's if it's something that's being sought by the applicant, it has to be part of the notice, but it's something that comes out up during the hearing and something the board is interested in pursuing, the board can do that without it having been noticed. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Jerry, that's helpful. Dan Weisman?
Thank you, just a couple of responses to Ms. Rubina's questions, I think she had. So roof space may be considered open space, usable open space, which is defined in in the zoning regulations. Roof space may be substituted for ground space, provided that such roof space is available and readily accessible to all the occupants. This roof space wouldn't qualify because it's only accessible to unit four.
Why we couldn't count it, yep.
So I just wanted to clarify that. And then the other thing about common open space in the definition, it's required to have a minimum dimension, which is twenty feet. So that that's why that portion of that side yard is not able to count. And then one more just clarification again, if if there is covered bike parking, that would be attached exterior to the building with a canopy, that canopy, because it's attached to the building, would need to meet the setbacks of fifteen feet which at the corner of the building in the top left corner by unit three, that's at fifteen point one feet. So just keep that in mind when considering where that covered bike parking may be located.
Okay, thank you.
If I understand correctly, that canopy and because this is not a for multifamily, you're not allowed to protrude into side yards like you are on a one and two family. Then in order for it to be a covered canopy, hopefully, am I understanding Dan's point correctly, that if it's closer to the end, it will require a variance, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Needs to be closer to the compact car parking spot, is that yours? Yeah.
Yes, or potentially freestanding and if the accessory.
Yeah.
I don't think that, do accessory structures apply to multifamily?
Well, they they would not have the same setback issue that the main structure does, so there might be additional relief there.
Right, because like they could go on the other side where that number one is, for example.
Five feet of of setback for that.
As Jerry said, that's really useful, that if the board feels that this is important and would like to us to provide it, I don't think we would have any any objections to that.
Yeah, and people with bikes need to be able to get there without squeezing between the two, the cars there, so there would need to be some kind of sidewalk, you know, to on this to the left of the.
Of the not compact car, yes. Car, yes.
Mr. Ano C K?
Yes, Marina, I I'm just wondering, the recycling and refuse room, do the tenants, do they have access from the hallway into it? Okay, so that somebody with the the ADA tenant, how do they get there, is there a ramp there?
There, you're absolutely right, there are two levels, because we have a difference between the inside and the outside and the upper portion is wheelchair accessible from the inside. Right, so they could be on the upper portion and use the the trash that's up there and the recycling that's right adjacent to it, yep.
All right, great, thank you, good question. Any more questions for?
For slide number seven?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lesko, go, Justin?
Yeah, I just I just want to follow up on Councilman Cohen's question, Marina, when you said there might be sliding doors on unit one, do you mean adjacent to the parking space or where the cursor kind of is right now?
I think David was suggesting where it says eleven feet, that those would be sliding doors, and I don't think that we have decided on that, but I like that idea.
Got it, thank you.
Right, David, am I Okay, great, thank you. Slide number eight, thank you, so this is where we clarify that although the gates look really nice and fancy, it was a little complicated with electronic buttons and things. So we got into simplifying this and got rid of them. However, as you could see, the walls, this is what I'm trying to talk about when we say I feel that it's nice to have kind of walls coming off the building and engaging with the site and the landscape, so that would be kind of a fence. And it would be a similar material that is part of the building. And and there is the cars you could see, and then there's the striped portion, and there's a very clear access where you get out of the striped portion and you go straight to the ramp, it's right there. Hopefully, I am explaining that correctly. Okay, now on to the bike parking, so we see that there would be here, the way to store bicycles, as you could see on the left, under the stair, you put two bicycles kind of facing forward. And then there's this super awesome bracket, this is a video that you can see on this website where you roll your bike, you don't have to lift it. And it goes up onto this bracket and it allows you to kind of swivel it back and forth. So we're showing two of them, those are the four required, however, as you could see, there's plenty of space for additional ones. Yep, and then we were discussing the possibility of extra space outside covered, and Jim, our civil engineer, will discuss where the guest bike parking is currently proposed. And I failed to mention that this is slide number nine, sorry, Jerry. Okay, uh, did we not have slide number eight? Oh, yeah, that was the wheelchair accessibility, we just forgot to say that this was slide number eight, yikes, okay, sorry about that, okay. And then that's the bike parking, all right, and I think the next slide was for Jim, right?
It it is, so and there obviously she's, Ms. Marina is not going anywhere, but if any any final questions for our architect before we go our next witness would be our civil testimony.
Mr. Lesko?
But my hand was still up, but I do have a final question, if we could go back to eight. And again, I'm not trying to to belabor this too much, but so those back windows are clearly windows, there's no step down, what you can't see behind the wall, I believe there's two steps there. So are those meant to be doors?
So they are, one of them, we were hoping would be operable, and the reason is going to back to Dan Weisman's point that when you're located right at the setback line, actually, I think steps may be allowed, now that I'm thinking about it, because they would be part of the Egress passageway. So we could add steps, those those windows go all the way down to the ground. But the building is a little out of the ground at that point, so I like David's point, David's point to make those operable, one of them making them a door and having access from that point, that that is possible, but the step will be in the setback, but that is allowed because it's part of Egress.
Got it, so both those sets of windows slash sliding.
We'll have one, one, one portion that opens, not not all of them, but like one part of it, yeah.
Thank you, that answers my question.
And I have a question about the the slide, Stanisiky said earlier, and I might not understand this properly, that there's one vehicle that would have to back out onto Tulane, is that what we're talking about here, how does how does this vehicle?
I think that when we get to our traffic engineer, he will be able to discuss that, right?
Yeah, let's wait for Mr. Jacques to address that question. Sorry.
Yeah, I I'm not traffic engineering testimony, yes.
We do not want you to. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, so I I have one other question that I think is appropriate, related to the architectural. Which has to do with the which unit or units might be suitable as an ADA unit? Because in my mind, really, the fourth unit, the one that's on the third floor, is the only one that really makes sense as an ADA unit. Because there are no internal stairs to the unit, well, there are to get to the roof, but essentially, a resident would be able to get to the living space and the bedrooms using the elevator. And, you know, would not need to navigate stairs for any reason. However, this ADA parking space However, this ADA parking space is so. Connected to unit one. It's adjacent to unit one's. Private outdoor space, you know, the there's a doorway that comes right out from unit one to the. To the loading area for the ADA space. And so I don't know if I'm guessing Marina, you've thought about this. But I'd like to get a comment from the applicant on, you know, does unit one make sense as an ADA space? And if not, does it make sense to have the ADA parking so wide open to to unit one?
Right, so it's definitely a balancing act, trying to fit everybody with all the parking. Given that we're having four units and the ordinance requires six parking spaces. And we're literally next door to the municipal parking garage. If we were to, for example, suspend disbelief and not have this be a parking space at all. And if we were to have the, you know, four parking spaces and a striped ADA spot in the other lot. That would require variances. However, that would. Be one, one unit has one parking space and there's very clear. Way to do it, very straightforward, very easy, wouldn't require any changes whatsoever. And but again, we're trying to do our best and balance. So the other balancing act is to not have, and we worked with the staff on this, not to have a really big. Wide gaping opening onto Tulane. So what this does by sort of splitting them, it makes it feel much more. Kind of in scale and narrows the openings onto the. Kind of crossing the pedestrian way. So if I had my. Dream come true, I wouldn't be having six parking spaces for four units. But that's what our ordinance requires and that's what we're providing.
Okay, that's plenty of information for now. I'm sure the board will wanna talk about it a little bit when we get to deliberations.
Yeah, I think that. Happy to answer any other questions.
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, and just one last question. And this honestly, this reminded me of a question Sprab would have asked if we still had it. But. Just maybe not a question, but a suggestion. That the one of the balconies on the second floor is adjacent to that unit three. It actually shares a wall. With the bathroom and it looks like it might be able to be rearranged to allow for that balcony to go to that unit. Obviously, this isn't required. If if you had someone that wanted four balconies and a roof deck, that's your prerogative. But was that considered to have that balcony go to unit three, which does not currently have private open space?
Yes, we did consider it and this is the option that we chose.
Got it. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Marina Rubina, architect? Okay.
Thank you. I'm here in case anybody else has questions. I'm just gonna turn my things off, but here in case I need to come back.
All right. Thanks, Marina. Mister Kennedy, next.
All right, thanks so much. Our next witness will be Jim Kamalik, our civil engineer. He's also a planner, but he'll be doing our civil engineering testimony tonight. Jim, if you could. Briefly, I know you're before this board quite often, give the board the benefit of your. Your license and credentials, so I can have you accepted as an expert here tonight.
Sure. Again, James Kamalak, licensed professional engineer here in New Jersey. Been practicing civil site planning for over twenty-five years, many projects here in this area. Bachelor's degree from Rutgers College of Engineering. And have been qualified before this board previously in the same capacity.
Thanks, Mister Kamalik. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. So James, if you could, we've got a clip of the site plan here and the bulk table. Wanna quickly take the board through. Yeah, a bit of a head start on the site plan with Marina's slides, but let me go through the the specifics here.
Sure. So for the most part, we've already got the overall layout of the property here, fronting on North Tulane Street on the right. We have the larger parking area down on the lower part of the plan, the south portion. Which does include one compact parking stall. And the ability for vehicles to pull forward and exit in a forward movement, which our traffic engineer will speak to. We discussed the private yard areas at the rear here on the site plan. In terms of the shared open spaces in the side yard and the rear yard. The building does respect all of these setbacks as illustrated on the zoning table. And the other bulk requirements where the minimum lot area is eight thousand square feet, this particular lot is just over nine thousand four hundred square feet. We are compliant with respect to the FAR. As well as the setbacks, as I mentioned, the building height as well, and also with the. Maximum coverage on the lot, which would be a maximum building coverage. So we do comply with the thirty percent as it stands, as well as the open space. This plan also shows utilities all coming from North Tulane Street. As shown on our, you know, sewer services, water services, et cetera, which all exist and will require just slightly. Upsizing in a few instances there, but they would pretty much follow the existing condition as well. Along the frontage of the property, there was some discussion in the engineer review memo about. Possibly the duplicity of. The sidewalk, which goes along the front facade of the building, in particular from the large parking lot to the main front door. And it was asked, can that be eliminated? Because at the street, there is also a sidewalk that's beyond the right of way line, basically off of our property. Maybe Ryan, if you can scroll back to slide seven, the color rendering, I think that's a better picture of this issue. One more. Back again, see.
One here?
Yeah, this one. So so as you can see here with, if you're looking at the rendering on the left. With our our private sidewalk, it's really the desire of the applicant to maintain their own. Ingress and egress to that front door from the parking area on property in the most direct way possible. To avoid a situation where people are carrying groceries and they have to walk to the street. Go around the corner to the front door and then go up several stairs to get to the front door, which was would result in. Following that suggestion in the memo. So, you know, we do see that they are in somewhat proximity. But, you know, the applicant really prefers this ingress to the front door from both sides. If if the board is, you know, still open to that, we think it makes sense and it would be the most safe condition for the occupants of the building. And then, Ryan, if you can go back to the site plan slides. We'll talk about it in a little bit more detail, but outside the front door, we are showing a. Short term parking stall, which is a single parking spot that's required. Outside the front door, and we have a zoomed in version of that in a subsequent slide here. So what we did on this exhibit in red, you can see where we just rotated that bicycle ninety degrees. And we also are demonstrating the fact that we have a five foot wide access to that bicycle area. We just widened the sidewalk there at the landing in the in the vicinity of that front door in order to facilitate. That parking space, you know, which we're providing what the requirement is, as well as. The detail of the loop to the right, which we can show on a compliance plan as to what that, you know, would look like in this orientation. So. That's that's what our exterior. Short term parking would be relative to the plan. Also mentioned previously. Because of the extensive amount of building and parking areas and drive aisles that were located on the property previously. This configuration results in a significant amount more of green space, almost nineteen hundred square feet of additional pervious area. That was previously impervious. So we think that there would be, you know, some qualitative improvements relative to, you know. Minimization of that impervious surface, since it is somewhat substantial with this design and a smaller building that's being proposed. In terms of the landscaping, we've provided a landscape plan here on the left where you can see that we're providing. Shrubs in and around the building as well as ground covers. We specified liriapi. We can certainly switch that out with a native. Plant material suggested by Mister Dobremilsky. And then. Our plan does demonstrate that eleven trees would be removed on this particular property. And we've located six, noting the fact that, you know, we do have the elevated. Parking deck immediately behind the building, so we have a twenty-five foot. Wide or deep rear yard area. So we'll work with him if there's a possibility to put one or two more trees on the property. The applicant, you know, has no objections to that. We just want to have them placed appropriately so that they can. They can flourish and it's not overcrowded with trees because the the open space areas around the building, we do want those open and available. Obviously for the tenants to use. So we just don't want them necessarily overcrowded with too many trees in the rear yard. But we're certainly willing to to make that adjustment.
And then if you. Jim, before we before we get off this slide, because I think it shows it quite well, one of the comments from the engineering planning memo. Was, actually, the engineering zoning memo was curb stops for these two spaces here. That's something that we agree with and don't have an objection to.
Yes, we'll include that.
And these would be the two spaces that we propose to be the initially the EV make ready spaces as well.
Yes, that's correct.
So I didn't mean to disrupt, but that's a good time to see it.
On that slide, another improvement, I would just say before I go on is we are connecting all of the. The roof leader drains as shown on this plan, we're extending a drain pipe from the right of way. Which doesn't currently pick up all of that water necessarily from the property and getting that. Into the right of way drainage system as shown on the plan.
Jim, apologies, I'm gonna interrupt you again. I see we have a hand up.
Yes, Ms. Pearl Mutter? You're on mute.
Um, I took a left to a couple of questions. This kind of relates to the green checklist, the green development checklist as well. You mentioned pervious, you meet the impervious standards, but it has still been given to put in some pervious to use pervious pavement. And if if so, could would you consider doing it?
Well. We we haven't considered incorporating that as a BMP, mainly because of the substantial reduction in impervious surface. Almost two thousand square feet that had impermeable material before. And we're and given that substantial reduction, there will be a significant improvement with converting those areas. Not just to pervious pavement, but actually to vegetated grass. So we're going from pavement to grass. In the side yards and the rear yards, and we we saw that as a benefit. Over a constructed pavement that's an engineering control that has, you know, maintenance issues. When, you know, the ultimate pervious nature will still be provided with plant material.
Well, I'm not sure one is a substitute for the other, but we can talk about that later. Also, you mentioned, you haven't mentioned, but the green development checklist mentions something about a cool roof. And you say efforts will be made to do that. What kind of efforts you're going to, what do you think about doing there? What are your plans?
Possibly Marina might be able to speak to that only because it's building related with that roof plan and the outdoor space. So I just might ask you to either defer that question to her or just hold it until she comes back. Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
Well, Marina, yeah, turned on. It's it's a good, good question. So Marina, can you speak briefly to the cool roof plans that you have in mind?
At this point in time, we do not have plans for a cool roof. However, if budget allows, we always try to consider within budget possibilities, everything we can do. So when when we're specifying roofing materials, we will absolutely take that into consideration. But again, it's a, it's gonna be a budget decision.
It'll save money for your tenants, that's for sure.
Um, understood, yeah.
And obviously, from an environmental standpoint, if you can put in more trees, we certainly would like to see that. And then what about bird safe glass? Are you going to be using bird safe glass? And on the checklist, problem with some of the ways you answer this checklist is you just say efforts will be made too. But don't specify what the efforts are.
Yeah, but I I think the answer is the same that we're very much aware and attuned to environmental questions. And bird related things are important. However, bird safe glass is not inexpensive. So if we're able to afford it as part of the project, we absolutely will investigate that and look at it. I have done projects with bird safe glass, but it's not cheap. So if we can afford it, we absolutely will.
There are some aftermarket. Products for making panes bird safe and, you know, whichever approach is taken. It is pretty darn important with windows this big. You know, these are, these are really sizable windows and you're gonna have. You know, you're gonna have collisions for sure if steps are taken to prevent them.
Um, we would definitely look forward to learning more about the aftermarket opportunities.
Well, you can Google it.
I will absolutely do that. However, having done major fridged glass projects, it is incredibly cost prohibitive. So I'm not sure if we can afford it, but I definitely hear your concern.
Thanks. Anything else, Freddie?
Uh, not at this time.
And I'm not sure whether the E, the PEC memo was the only one. I think there might have been other. Other memos too that remarked on the. The, in some cases, sort of. Cursory or not super responsive. Answers to the green building checklist. And I just want to point out, that's a new document. It's it's, the PEC has put a lot of work in it into it. And it is really thorough and it's informative and it can provide guidance. And it really should be something that we, you know, we hope and we know you, some of you are, you know, come back again and again to the board in the future. You know, please use it as a resource. Because I, you know, you should find it helpful. Mister Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And to that point, actually, when I was talking to the board during the master plan consistency review about the green building checklist. One of the things I mentioned was that the PEC alongside staff worked very hard to make those questions more of yes or no questions. Rather than ones that people talk around. And in this case, the column for yes or no wasn't filled out. So just want to point that out and please in the future fill that out. So, you know, we get those direct answers even when the answer is no. But that was.
Better, do better next.
But it it is a a new form and that one that came into existence actually while this project came into existence. So we we actually very much appreciate that it was frankly deemed complete and allowed to proceed. We're we're learning with it too and it is, to all of your points, it's a lot of work that went into it and it is an excellent guidebook. So much, much appreciated that it's there and we're learning how to how to work with it.
Just one comment on that, the PEC is actually coming out with a document which will hopefully give some helpful hints on how to how to fill it out.
Much appreciated and I'm I'm sure staff will will point to those of us who are here regularly to it. Because obviously we can use some of that guidance. So much, thank you for the efforts on that.
Anything else? Anything else, Justin?
Yeah, I actually had a question that just came up after. So Jim, while you're on this slide, can you zoom in and show where the ADA parking sign is?
We were showing it mounted here on the building. In front to the left, in front of the striped area.
Thank you. So there's a half wall or three quarters wall or whatever. or three quarters wall or whatever.
Yeah, Justin, just to cut to the chase on this, um, if you go Ryan to the slide that has the the bicycle loop. I, I just made a note here. This is more where we would anticipate having it at the center of the stall so that it has greater visibility um, in the context of the ADA parking stall.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
And Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
This reduction in pervious by nineteen hundred square feet, is that from the prior approval or from the house that was originally there?
It's from the original um, configuration, the parking lot, the drive aisles, the parking stalls.
It's from the approval. It's not from the original house.
It is from the original house.
Doesn't sound it, did David?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's from the, the existing conditions plan.
However, it's not a house. It was a mixed use building. So from the original building, yes.
I see, okay.
Um, Justin, your hand is still up. Did you have anything else? Okay.
Um, Jim, I believe we, we were on the landscape plan and I could maybe zoom
Yeah, I just wanted to scroll to the right and just say from a lighting standpoint, we, we work to to provide lighting in the critical areas at doorways with um, canopy fixtures, downlit, uh, cutoff canopy fixtures as well as uh, bollards in and around the pedestrian areas and then one um, parking lot fixture, um, that's also cut off and at a very low height of twelve feet in that five vehicle parking area. So pretty straightforward and generally consistent with the prior approval.
So in, um, just quickly out to the landscaping and Mr. Dobremilsky's um, memo suggested adding some trees and specifically uh, some evergreens, which I think would um, would appeal very much to the um, occupants of those units that face uh, well, to the left in this picture, is that two and three, I think? Units two and three?
Yeah.
Um, uh, you know, to help with screening, I know there's going to be a fence. Um, maybe you can talk a little bit more about that as well, although I do anticipate this will come to the landscape committee at some point in the future. Um, but one of the features of the lot prior to everything, um, you know, being changed on this property was a very, very large hemlock tree. And I know we're not going to plant uh, hemlocks for at least two reasons. But it would be, it would be nice to see evergreen, some evergreen trees on this. And I think there's, there's room for them. That I think, Mr., were you suggesting, Dan, um, Arbor Vitey?
Yeah, good, good evening. Yes, I was actually along the rear uh, or the left side on this view. Uh, property.
Which would do fine even with the, even with the, the, the big giant parking garage right there.
Yes, they, they're, they're tolerant of the shade to some degree, you know, uh, 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 for this situation, I think it's really good spot for them. I mean, we
Yeah.
shy away from American Arbor Vitey because of deer foraging and I think it's pretty doubtful with all the fencing and everything going on, deer will ever be here. So this is a good opportunity to use that tree.
Yeah.
I think that's a good solution. And previously, the garage was a major screening element in that backyard area, which no longer exists with this plan. So that'll provide some screening of the parking deck at an elevated height too. So I think we agree that that's a good solution.
Good, thanks.
Jim, unless you have any more comments on, uh, notes on slide eleven with the lighting plan. Uh, moving back to slide twelve, which was the, the short term bike details, I believe you went through that. And uh, um, unless there are other questions for our civil engineer, our next test, our next um, witness would be our uh, traffic consultant.
Um, Mr. Weissman has his hand up, so let's hear what Dan has to ask before we go on. Dan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just staff is requesting that, uh, due to the construction of driveway aprons and utilities going into the public right of way, that the public sidewalk along the entire lot frontage be reconstructed. Um, you may be able to see it well on slide ten. Um, but there's an awful lot of interruptions going on there between all of that work. Um, so just wonder if there's any objection from the applicant for that.
No, we're, we're agreeable to that. I just failed to mention it in the testimony.
Great, thank you.
Would that be after the completion of construction?
Yes, we would anticipate once all the crossings are complete, um, it would leave a, a new condition along that frontage.
Okay. Thank you.
Now perhaps with that, I'll, I'll introduce George Jacmar, our, uh, from BFJ, planning to talk about the vehicle traffic ingress egress.
And um, we do need to qualify him, although we're very familiar with Mr. Jacmar.
If you could briefly give the, the board the benefits of your credentials and expertise. So we're gonna have you uh, qualified again as an expert here tonight.
Yes, uh, good evening. Um, yeah, I have a civil engineering degree from the Polytechnic Institute in Lausanne, Switzerland and then masters in urban planning from Stanford. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey and other states as well. And I have presented in front of this planning board for many years.
Except qualifications. Oops, maybe you didn't say quite enough. Go ahead.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you, thank you. Um, I think in terms of the parking arrangement that we're looking at, you know, we, there are basically two choices. One is uh, where all the cars will be parked next to each other perpendicular to the sidewalk and they will all drive in forward and back out, you know, in, in reverse into the streets to get out and and that's obviously not the most desirable layout. And um, you know, as you know, uh, it tends, it can be hazardous and we have a good example in Princeton along University Place near the McCullough Theater. And you know, if you pull out of a parking spot there and you know, Mr. Anosike mentioned a van, if you're next to a van, not necessarily if you're in a van, if you're next to a van, you have very difficult uh, visibility site conditions. So that's why in this case, we opted for this particular layout that you can see here. Uh, where we have five places, one compact space and so we're talking about uh, thirteen. And the next slides show how we laid this out so that each maneuver, each car can exit with the nose first. Um, so that's basic. It was the main goal of this design. We picked a relatively large standard car. And you can see how the cars can maneuver uh, in a way where they all can exit with the nose first. Doesn't mean necessarily that everyone will do it. But we designed it such that um, they can do it and it's definitely for the spaces that are spaces four and five. Uh, it's more or less guaranteed that they will exit uh, with a nose first. You can see here how that will happen. So the, the advantage of the layout that we have now is that visually you see only you know, you don't have this big open space with five cars parked next to each other. It's a more restricted space. There's more landscaping in, in front of the parking area. And we do have a safer condition in the sense that the cars are likely, all of them are likely to exit with the nose first. Now, in regards to the uh, ADA space, there's not enough room for that vehicle to make a hammerhead turn. And so, yes, we, that vehicle will have to exit in reverse. And as I said, you know, yes, it could be a van if it's an ADA van. Uh, but they have, in this case, because there are no vehicles parked next to it, they have, you know, a better condition than what we have, for instance, on University Place near the McCullough Theater. So we could not avoid that for that particular location. And it is, it is an usual condition. We have several examples along this section of North Tulane Street. There's a, a more recent home on the opposite side from this project that has two parking spaces. I think it's two. If not more, where the vehicles back out. Uh, so for the ADA space, we could not avoid that. And I, I don't think it's any, you know, particularly hazardous situation, especially because it's only one vehicle that exits us. So in terms of the driver has relatively good sight conditions to the left and the right when the driver pulls out of that spot. So that's basically all the presentations that I have. Uh, I think from traffic impact point of view, there's really no issue that it's a very, very low traffic generator. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Anosike and then Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, George, can you, can you explain how much uh, sideline that uh, the backing traffic will have? Especially where you have that guarding fence on the right side of it. Uh, I'm not concerned about pedestrians uh, on the sidewalk, like sudden emergence of the, of the backing traffic.
Right. Well, we're talking about the ADA space, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. So the driver, you know, in the ADA space will back out and that driver, depending on the vehicle, uh, that driver will either use the rear view mirrors to look out or turns around and looks around. And the other part, you know, now more and more vehicles, they have an um, a camera that shows you what's happening behind. So it is something that, you know, is very common. Uh, it may not be ideal in this situation, but it is definitely very common. And, and if you look at, I, I also just looked at the, the partial that's north of here. It's, it's somewhat open so that it's not a question of sight distance. It's more the cone of vision that the driver has can see um, the activity on the sidewalk, north and south of the driveway to some degree. Uh, and it's not like you have, you know, and again, I'm, I'm using the University Place example. You know, where you have, you could have a van next to your parking. So we don't have that condition that we have on University Place. Um, so in that sense, I think it is a, a safe arrangement. Uh, it may not be ideal, but it is something that's uh, safe and it's very common.
George, is, is, uh, is street parking permitted on this side of Tulane?
Uh, I think it's permitted on the other side, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Parking spaces on the other side.
Yeah, uh, just a couple of questions. Um, number one, I, I feel like there's a turning movement diagram that you didn't show that was probably the most challenging um, parking space, which is the, the middle one facing the parking garage. Um, not the, the one next to the compact uh, parking space and I
Yeah, it's here. Number two?
No, oh, I didn't. I'm sorry. I guess I missed that slide. That is the most difficult. It's multiple, multiple movements, right?
Yes, it's, well, it's no one back out. Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's one more forward and then backwards. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I'm sorry I missed that. Um, the other question I have is relative to the ADA space. I mean, if I were going to use that space, I would back into the space so I could go out forward. And I know not every driver feels comfortable backing into a parking space, but the question is, are there any sort of modifications that you would recommend to the sidewalls? Um, you know, that gives some enclosure there or any other suggestions you would have to facilitate that movement to, of backing into the parking space to sort of encourage people to do that if they're, if they feel comfortable doing it.
It's an interesting question and um, you know, the, the, what we call diagonal backup parking is becoming a preferred backup design. And um, I was not too long ago in Maryland and Washington DC and you see more backup diagonal parking in those areas than we see in New Jersey and New York.
Yeah.
Um, but as you said, there's, there's a number of drivers that are not very happy, you know, in doing the back out, uh, back in parking. Um, so that's, that's a difficulty. I don't think we could do anything uh, to facilitate that backup maneuver. Could we, um, Ryan, maybe go back to one of the visuals that shows the back? The, the, yeah. The ADA space, there was a perspective of the drawing. Maybe that's the best one to look at.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. So the, and that doesn't show here on the right of this drawing, that's low landscaping. So that's relatively good condition for anyone backing out. They can see, you know, the, the, to the side and the same on the other side, on, on the, the left of the vehicle that's backing out. Now, if they back in there, I don't know that there's anything one can do to facilitate the back in maneuver. Um, um, you know, we opening the widening the opening, I think would not change that. Uh, because the driver still has to get into that spot. It would be marked on the pavement.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So I don't know that we can do that other than maybe
I'm satisfied with that answer. I just wanted to, wanted to probe a little bit. Um, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Lesko and then Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I kind of had a similar question. Uh, if you could go to the site utility plan, that might be the best one to look at. So it, it looks like those, or either way, it looks like the parallel spaces are directly across from the lip of the driveway. So a van would be able to maneuver kind of its nose in the lip of the driveway and its rear bumper if there are cars in those two spaces.
Yeah, I mean, depends on the size of the van. You know, we tested the car that we tested, I think is sixteen and a half feet long. We're, that's a fairly standard. It's, I think it was Tesla S. So it's a relatively large car. Uh, and that can make the maneuver, you know, with the two cars parked in space. Um, I guess it's one and two, you know, perpendicular. What we call the EV ready spaces.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm talking more about the ADA space, my apologies.
Okay.
So an ADA van would be able to
Yeah, oh yeah, drive in and out there, yes.
With the spaces across, okay.
Yes, um, let me see, I have a street view open here.
Is there a reason why there aren't turning templates for this space, but for the others?
Uh, honestly, the, the, the reason we had, we brought in Mr. Jacmar was uh, following our initial pre-application meeting. We wanted to narrow down the entrance to the larger parking lot to avoid a larger driveway and to avoid um, more interruptions to the sidewalk. And engaged him to show that that would work rather than any concern about getting in or out. It was a function of how, how can we narrow that um, this driveway here, it preserve as much sidewalk as possible uh, for, uh, for the streetscape. So I honestly wasn't a, a concern that was on our radar until uh, a few days ago. So the, the, the reason for the template was to show that we could narrow this area down and we had gone through several redesigns of this parking area to uh, you know, essentially preserve as much sidewalk as possible along Tulane.
Yeah, but we can, you know, we can do the auto turn check for a van that enters and, and backs out of there, you know, to verify it and um, to make sure that that works. We'll be happy to do that and submit it to the staff uh, to show that it does work. And if not, you know, maybe that we may have to widen the opening a little bit.
Thank you.
Uh, Claudia?
Yeah, I'm not sure if my question overlapped a little bit with Mr. Lesko's. Uh, but I'm looking at the two spaces that are parallel to the building. And I did not see, and perhaps I missed something, uh, whether you had the um, the diagram for those cars and how they would be. Um, would they be backing out of the spaces or do they have a turning radius out of those spaces?
Yes, here you can see for space number four. Yeah, yeah, there's enough room to back out. You can see the wheels. Yeah, yeah, there's enough room to back out. You can see the wheels go all the way to the end of the pavement and then they can back out, yes. So we designed that space, you know, we tried to uh kind of reduce the opening as much as possible so that visually you don't see a big parking area. At the same time, we needed enough space for vehicles to make the hammerhead turn.
Okay. Uh, Victor?
Yes, uh, George. Uh, on the architectural plan, um, that was shown, I guess, the rendition of the ADA space. Uh, it shows uh the occupants coming out in between the half wall and the vehicle parked. Right there. So I I I guess uh, back to the question that uh Justin asked. If it was a van that was parked, how much space will such a person have between the vehicle and that new wall? Um, if again, it it makes that accessible aisle almost uh uh inconsequential. Uh, which is the the whole idea of having an accessible aisle. Is it, did you consider moving this ADA space to another spot and just make this a regular parking space?
Well, we, I have not loo- looked into, you know, moving the ADA space, but looking at this drawing here. You know, the it looks like the the space where the vehicle is parked, you know, whether it's a regular car or a van, you know, they are all uh between roughly six and a half feet wide. The vehicle itself, six and a half is a is a relatively wide vehicle. And the parking spot, I think, and we can verify, I think in this case, it's eight feet plus eight feet for that accessible area next to it.
Um, yes, and yeah, absolutely right. So the van, if it's an a normal van has to fit in a normal parking space, which is below eight feet. And then the code requirement is to have three feet passageway, which is exactly what we're providing. Um, there's uh, this is absolutely meeting the requirements. So the van fits into the van space and there will still be room to spare because there there are no vans that are eight feet wide, I hope. And then the additional striped van van unloading area is to the side. And then there's a, as required, a three foot passageway from it, but it's next to the driveway itself. So there's plenty of room there with the three feet plus the eight feet. Um. I'm not one hundred percent sure what is the concern.
I think the other Marina, the other thing we can add, you know, the the reason for the eight width, eight foot width next to the parking space is because some of the vans have an uh, a ramp that comes out, you know, that's the reason for the eight feet adjacent to the parking lot. But we don't need the eight feet opening all the way for the person like we see in the image here. Uh, three feet is is uh sufficient for that. Uh, we could obviously opening it up more, but I think it it was visually, there was an uh wish to to keep that uh opening to a minimum.
Okay, thank you. Um. Mister Cohen?
So I I don't want to jump too quickly to deliberation, but I really want to push the notion that this is not the right location for the ADA parking. As I noted before, this unit is, you know, this parking is right on top of unit number one. Unit number one is a two-story unit with no bedrooms on the first floor. It's not it's not viable as a as a as an accept as an accessible unit. So having the accessible parking right, you know, in the living room of the of a of a unit that belongs to somebody else is just not the right thing to do.
Yep.
Now, I have a proposal, which is, I mean, Marina sort of suggested, well, you could just get rid of this altogether. Put the uh accessible, the ADA space in the other lot and lose one of the parking spaces in the other lot. And if you did that, you would be down to four parking spaces. And I don't want to say that um, you know, the board shouldn't entertain that, but if we want to be closer to meeting the parking requirement or perhaps even entirely meeting the parking requirement, what I would suggest is move the ADA space to the to the communal lot. Lose one of the spaces there as a loading spot for the ADA. And then have, continue to have one space here or possibly two tandem spaces here. Make the driveway a little bit longer. And you could have two spaces dedicated to unit number one. Have your full complement of parking and have your ADA ADA space more appropriately where it belongs. Now, you'd have to put a ramp on the other side instead of a step up on the other side, the way it is currently. But I think that that would be a much better arrangement or give a variance for one parking space by having four in the communal lot, one on one being ADA and having one over here. Um, I'd be okay with either of those solutions, but both of them, I think, are way better than having this as the ADA space.
Yep.
I I I suspect we're about to have a comment from our engineer about some of these things. I just note, though, that the just to just as we're deliberating and thinking about this, that the tandem arrangement would also require a variance. Those would not, uh, the stack spaces uh wouldn't necessarily count independently absent.
I know they're allowed under certain circumstances, Ryan. I don't remember what the exact re- limitations are, but they're they're allowed under certain circumstances.
Maybe Derek could speak to that.
Just noting, though, that if if we go down that route, that we make sure we cover anything that would be involved in in arranging it technically, but uh, and Jim, hopefully I gave you an extra couple of seconds to uh to to think through this.
Be- before you do, Jim, Derek, do you do you want to weigh in quickly?
Yeah, I have to double check, but I believe it's in parking garages. It was done for Palmer Square's garage to allow stack parking for large events and stuff, so it would be a variance. Um. Didn't contemplate this type of situation.
Though it happens all the time in my neighborhood.
I'm sure it does.
Uh, Mister Kamalik?
And I I just wanted to give a little background and color as to some of the constraints um and the supporting reasons why the ADA stall is on that right side of the property. The the property has some topographic conditions where it actually slopes from right to left.
That slopes down from right to left or up from right to left?
Uh, it slopes down from from right when you're looking at the front of the property from where the ADA stall is now to the left.
Okay.
Okay, so with it on the right-hand side of the property, we're able to have a condition where we have a sloped sidewalk across the property frontage at five percent maximum. And it's it's a better trap of pa- of travel for the ADA accessible route from that stall to the front door. But you'll notice on our plan that if you approach from the left-hand side where the five-car parking area is, we have several risers in that area and it's much steeper to get from there to the front door. And we're mitigating this grade change, which right now there are retaining walls out on the left-hand side of the property where that parking lot is going. So this was sort of a balancing act. Um, and that's also a reason that supported it on the right-hand side to have a better accessible path of travel. And I just wanted to call that out because it's it's not as easy as just doing a flip-flop and we're good. There are other topographic constraints that that drove this.
That's why you get the big bucks, Jim. This is still, this is not the right place for the ADA spot. Sorry.
So I think that although it's not easy and you're right, David, that we do have the best engineer. Um, and we will.
I don't think he exactly said that with no disrespect to Mister Kamalik. No disrespect, I'm just saying.
But we.
Let's not put words in Mister Cohen's mouth.
But we could certainly work on that. Um, it's not easy. Jim is absolutely right. We 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 did, you know, he was very, very, very adamant how much of a difference, you don't even perceive it, but it is a big difference in slope, but it's not impossible. You're absolutely right.
Okay, other questions for um uh uh Mister Jacomar, have you finished your testimony? So our questions now are for any of any of your witnesses. Uh, okay, Mister Mister Lesko, Justin?
Yes, uh, there was one other thing I don't believe was covered. It was in uh my report. Uh, really, I stole it from Victor's report. Uh, so um, but there was a recommendation to paint uh ADA accessible space. Uh, you know, the the logo on the space itself. Is that something that the applicant is willing to do?
Wherever it ends up.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
Uh, David Cohen?
Yeah. I also, um, I don't know what the right answer is for this, but there is a very high likelihood that you're not going to have somebody who's wheelchair-bound in this building at all. And so, you know, twisting ourselves into knots to provide an ADA space um, that would never be needed or used. Um. I don't, you know, this is not as, it's not, well, I don't know if it's a zoning issue or it's regulated by some other aspect of the code, but you know, to be able to say, well, we don't have an ADA space, but we have an ADA convertible space in the left-hand lot by losing one of the other parking spaces. So, you know, and at that time, should we need it, we'll solve the access issue into the building could be, you know, I I don't know. Uh, but I think that I would support that. Um, you know, having an ADA convertible parking space rather than an ADA space from day one.
Um, yeah, that's an interesting uh notion. Mister Mister Muller?
So the communal spaces would continue to be designed the way they are? Is that your idea? What I just said was, yes, they would be designed the way they are with the concept that one of them could be converted to an ADA space if needed at some point in the future. And that would mean if somebody moves into the complex and is wheelchair-bound? Correct. Okay, thank you.
Um. That might also allow for the additional ec- outside covered bike parking to to happen where the ADA or i- in some part of where the ADA ADA space is currently located. Do those of you with design experience think that makes sense? I'm just trying to think of ways that, you know, such that we're not asking people with bikes to walk across a lawn to get to a covered area or squeeze between parked cars or uh, anything. Uh, Ms. Luca?
Sorry, someone else was going to jump in. Okay, um, so I'm just on the ADA parking issue, is it possible to put the ADA optional parking where the two um uh EV ready parking spaces are currently noted? Next to the lobby and mail area?
Uh, I guess I I'd be, I can attempt to respond. Um, I think assuming we can work out, how do we get from the larger parking lot to the front door somehow? Uh, what I'm understanding David is proposing is that we, um, the unit one adjacent parking space will no longer be ADA. It will be regular parking spot. Um, if need be, it could be tandem. Um, and then I would say it would be easier to do the two parking spaces that are next to that triangle labeled number one, Ryan, if you don't mind pointing to them, the ones that are um, not the EV ready, the other two. So one of them would be the the parking space and the other one would be the striped area. Maybe that one right next to the little passageway. And it also happens to be the most difficult one to get in and out of. As David correctly pointed out. And then right in front, there could be a very where the little cloud is, um, Ryan, if you don't mind pointing to it above that parking spot. Right there, yeah, between the edge of the parking lot and the cloud could be a very nice looking um bike parking so that that striped area would be access. Um, that's an easy way to access all the bikes.
Um, could you just tell the board, what is the difference in elevation between the parking area and the front door?
Um, Jim, like three feet maybe?
Three feet, okay.
Well, it's three feet at the street, maybe three feet.
Well, it's it's three feet, basically, that has to be um accessible fire ramp. If.
Yeah, it's about two, it's about two feet.
Two feet, yeah. So I I suspect that we can ramp somehow, not exactly sure.
So you have a a two-feet vertical distance and then you have a ramp distance. So you could have a ramp distance of up to over ten feet.
In order to provide a wheelchair-accessible ramp, it has to be for every one foot we go up. Um, it would be twelve feet horizontally. So for two feet, we need a twenty-four-foot ramp, which will somehow, not sure how, will work out. Okay, um, but I.
Well, it looks like you have twenty-six feet.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking somehow will.
And that'll need railings, you know.
Right, exactly. We need need railings, but you could hide those with a low wall, you know, and have the rail. I mean it.
Does a wheelchair ramp require railings if it's?
If it's.
If it, if it's not adjacent to the building?
No, if it if it's one for every one foot horizontally, I'm sorry, for every uh, one foot vertically, twelve feet horizontally requires a railing. If it's twenty feet horizontally for every foot you go up, then you don't need a railing. Uh, but I I think that that proposal, if I'm understanding correctly, then we would move the ADA parking spot to the very left one. Um, then there would be the striped area where the center one is, and that would be the van loading, unloading and also access to the bike um thing.
Yeah.
And then the compact stays the way that is. The EV ones are not changing. And then the question is whether the unit one parking spot will be it itself just one or does it um need the second one tandem? Um, what, I'm not sure if we have preferences, but um, we'll um, be happy to hear suggestions.
Either scenario would require variance.
Either either scenario requires a variance because tandem, either it's one less parking space or tandem, both are variance condition, correct?
Maybe I can uh ask Dan Weisman. Can, going back to David's point, not what Marina just said, where there'd still be an ADA space, that there would not be originally an ADA space. Can we can we do that? I guess this was my impression, but I don't have a good handle on it, that you would need to have an ADA space. Dan, do you have a?
Uh, ADA standards require uh where you're providing at least one parking space for dwelling unit that uh ADA space is required. Uh, so if the project is writing at least one parking space, then one of those spaces has to be ADA compliant.
And and we can't, it's not, it it's not a zoning issue that one could get a variance from.
No, Department of Justice for the United States.
Yeah.
Okay, so and.
If you had ten, two tandem spaces, that would just lead to a lot more backing out onto uh Tulane, wouldn't it?
Yes, yes, it would. I was thinking about that, too. Uh, I don't think tandem's a great idea, actually.
The other possibility is to not have any parking there at all and just have four parking spaces for four units.
Yeah, and when I when I was suggesting bikes might go over there, that I was I was assuming mistakenly that the thought was to get rid of that space altogether, but this certainly shouldn't be both over there. Um. Mister Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And uh, I think we're starting to get some momentum on this, so I don't want to uh, you know, go against it, but I do have a question for the engineers and probably more so the. I do have a question for the engineers and probably more so the traffic engineers, um. Either our, uh, the municipal staff or the applicants, uh. Can an ADA space be in that far further corner? Or does it have to be the closest or, or one of the closer ones, um, to the entrance? Not all at once, please.
I think in theory, they're supposed to be the closest, the most, uh, convenient. But if there's a question of ramping, you know, maybe we can justify the ADA space. You know, where Marina mentioned it.
Yeah, I've been to many. Facilities where the closest parking spaces were not. The accessible ones, I'll give you an example right off the bat, at Walgreens. There are a couple of non a- accessible parking spaces that are closer to the front entry. Then the exa- you know, than the accessible ones. And I've, I've seen it, it, that's true of my physical therapist as well, I mean, I think it's, um. It's not uncommon, especially here where it's really. A difference, a, a minimal difference in distance.
Yeah.
For the furthest space is six feet further than the nearest, you know, it's.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Nah, and I'm not, I, I have no problem with that, I just want to make sure it's, you know, legal and moral, uh. Before we go agreeing to it.
Yeah, and what's the advantage of having the AD space as the for, I guess, south space?
Um, the advantage of that would be that it gives us more room to ramp. That's number one, and number two is that, um, open area where the loading and unloading would provide easy access to potential bike. Storage located in that trapezoidal zone.
Would that middle space then be eliminated? Is that?
Yes, that would be the striped, uh, loading, unloading van zone, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And would the compact space turn into a, doesn't need to be compact space?
Uh.
I guess it, you'd need to do math to figure that out, maybe it would.
Let me double check, but I think that two parking spaces combined is what we need, let me just make sure I'm not misremembering. Uh, actually, you're right, I think we will. That those two combined are eighteen and we need sixteen, so we'll gain two extra feet, yes, good point.
Uh, Mister Weisman?
Uh, just as we're considering moving parking spaces, uh, the partial of the accessible aisle for the current ADA space. Is already under a canopy, so that does provide another opportunity to provide covered bike parking, should that space move.
Yeah, but it would be right outside the windows of unit one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wh- which I was actually gonna say, if, if it becomes clear that this space is going to unit one or has the potential to, because it's not. ADA accessible, then you could bring the gate back, uh, if the applicant wanted that, and then I'm sure it'd be something you just. Give them some sort of clicker to open it like a garage door, uh, then there's not the accessibility issues.
Madam Chair, I'd like to bring up another point, uh, it goes back to what was said earlier. It is very likely that the ADA space will not be occupied. Statistically, it's, you know, very likely. And so if we move the ADA space to the two spaces on the south side, there would not be a car there. And then we end up with three parking spaces in effect, three real parking spaces. And then the owner of unit one will have a car parked in front, now if it becomes a tandem. Space next to unit one, that means it's probably the same household that has to use a tandem spaces. It would be the one household that has two cars, and it's not certain that the owner or the tenant in unit one. Will have two cars, it could very well be that, that it's a tenant in unit four that has two cars. So, you know, it, it's not an ideal situation either, if we move the ADA space. You know, to the south of the building, um. Given the likelihood that it's, you know, that statistically, it will not be occupied.
Right.
Um, Madam Chair, can I respond to that?
Yes.
Be- because I think that's frankly, the, the exact reason why we're talking about this, because it's not going to be o- occupied. You know, a good amount of the time, person in unit one is going to start thinking it's their side yard until someone actually needs it. And then, you know, we have a problem, so I, I agree completely, you know, the ADA space might not be used. But I'd rather it not be used on the other side, uh, where no one's going to put their things in it, than on this side. Uh, where the unit one might start seeing it as their patio.
Yeah.
And I, uh, this goes back to Dan's point about what the, what the legal constraints are, but. I don't think that you have to have this. ADA space available for some random member of the public. I mean, I think it's there for the residents of this building. So the question is, does it sit completely unused? Uh, if there don't happen to be any handicapped residents, or can you give it to one of the residents? Um. Who's not handicapped in the event that there is no resident who requires a handicap space.
Is that a zoning question? Question, yeah, yeah, okay.
I mean, I know we talked about this related to EV spaces. When you have EV spaces that are taking up some of the. Uh. Required parking spaces for a multifamily building, and I believe what we discovered was, someone who does not own an EV can park. In any EV space under those circumstances. Um, you know, if there aren't enough EVs to use all of the EV spaces in a multifamily building, but obviously. Accessibility is a different kind of issue than.
Yeah, and I mean, what if people had visitors or relatives, you know, coming that needed that space, um. Yeah, I, I don't. Anyway.
I, I, I think, I think legally, it's, it's ultimately, uh, up to police enforcement on, uh, occupation of ADA spaces, uh. Any ADA sign would have the penalty signage associated with it. Um, so it, it comes down to police enforcement, um, so I think legally that, that space would have to remain. Uh, available to anybody who is occupying or visiting this building, um, or an ADA space.
Yeah.
So I don't think.
Okay, I think that's absolutely right.
Um, Mister Bodigheimer has his hand up and therefore I'm expecting a dressing down right now. Go ahead, Nat. Let her rip.
Oh my God, I, I've become completely predictable. Uh, look, I just wanted to express my bewilderment, because I, I just sort of, well, first of all, it's like, I, I. I feel like we're designing, we're, we're like getting involved in design on the fly, and I, 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 I feel like as well, we've sort of imposed on ourselves some kind of deadline. To, to, to prove this, th- this evening, but I don't understand what the policy. Rush is on our side, when the applicant seems to have submitted, uh, materials that are. You know, that are requiring this incredibly deep engagement with us on design issues. To resolve things that are, you know, I, 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 I sort of would expect and would have been worked out with staff, like, I, 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 I sort of feel like. We should be just articulating a bullet list of things that we are not comfortable with the application and sending them off to figure it out and work with staff on this, because I, 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 I'm. I, I have no confidence that when, you know, the, the, the. We all get too tired and unable to actually. Process all this stuff under a time gone of eleven o'clock. Which, uh, you know, that we will actually have gotten everything right. At all, like, there's just too many things, so I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm asking whether there's another way that we could handle this tonight, and whether we're really under. The pressure to get this done tonight, and whether we can't. Give the policy direction that I feel it's the board's obligation to do. Without getting into the design details that, I, 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 I mean, frankly, I don't feel I'm qualified to, to, to be in the weeds on.
Well, one way to answer that is that the applicants. This applicant has no variances, so, you know, although there are definitely some, some things that, you know, needed addressing. You know, there's no, nothing in the ordinance that says you can't put an ADA accessible unit. Neck, right next to a unit that's very unlikely to be occupied, it just doesn't make sense. So what we're trying to do is, it, it is make it make more sense, a- and that applies to the common open space as well. Even if it means that we're asking or we're requiring. Or introducing whatever the notion of variances that the applicant is not asking for, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I completely get your frustration, but I also think we can address this tonight and, um. And that these are, are practical considerations that are worth. Mulling over.
But do they have to listen to anything that we're asking for? Is there anything that? I mean.
Think they've certainly expressed a, uh, a keen interest in listening, listening to what we're asking for and have. And, and our understanding that the issues being raised are. Um. Uh, common sense, practical concerns.
I'm far from saying that these are valid concerns, I mean, I'm just asking the procedural question, like.
Yeah.
Are they listening to us out of the goodness of their hearts? Do we really have a, like, what is our? I'm sorry, I just.
Yeah, we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to deny the application that's conforming, but we're allowed to put conditions on it.
Exactly, exactly, and we have, we have a lot of discretion, uh, in imposing those conditions as long as they're reasonable, there's a couple of. Criteria, but reasonable relate to the zoning, et cetera. And what was just, what was articulated for quite an extended period of time with respect to the ADA space. Clearly, it's reasonable to do that, by the way, now that would result in five spaces, how many do they need under the ordinance?
Six.
So they would need, is that a variance or is, or is it a waiver?
Correct.
Yeah.
Variance.
Variance.
So you need a variance for that, and then, I don't know, it just seemed to me, uh, kind, as an outsider looking in, that, uh. There had to be more grappling with this whole common open space idea, um, so that the, the space is used, is used well rather than just.
And that it works for everybody, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, it's past time for a break, um.
Madam Chair, can I jump in, I'm sorry, just before.
Yes, please, and also Mister Cohen, and then we'll take ten, go ahead, Justin.
Just, I, I want to address the assertion that the board doesn't have any control over this. I mean, Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've heard anything that affirmatively says that ADA space even works, I mean, we've heard some information about. Yes, there's three feet and, you know, a van could fit in there. But I think for those reasons, the board does have some discretion here, even though this is a variance-free application at this time.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, uh, for all the reasons given in what you've just said, and just a bat, a van backing out onto, uh. Tulane, I mean. Uh, you know, it's problematic.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Jerry, David.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, in the spirit of being responsive to Nat's, uh, discomfort. I mean, I would, I would be fine saying. Move the ADA space to the other side, we don't have to decide tonight which space it is or exactly what the layout of the communal lot is. But get the ADA space out of where it is now, and give a variance. For one fewer parking space, do not go with the tandem space, because. For a variety of reasons, it's, it may be overparking unit one, unit one and underparking other units and. You know, it's more impervious coverage, so that would be my, my direction to the applicant and to staff. Be rather than having us solve it.
Yeah.
Move the ADA space and give a variance for one fewer space.
Right. Yep, that makes sense to me too, okay, it's nine twenty-six, um, we're gonna take a break, I'll see everybody back at nine thirty-five. So, nine minutes. Thanks, everybody, see you soon. Um. For your patience. Um, let's see, do we have everybody? Don't think we have.
Maybe one's there, I think she stepped away.
Ah, there we go, okay. Um. Where were we? We were, we were, I, I, I think we had, uh, sort of put that. Parking thing to bed with, uh, Mister, with Mister Cohen's, uh, comment right before we broke. And, um. And, and that, I, I didn't mean to be flippant, um, I do appreciate the. The, the gut check that you. Al- always. Um, so.
I, I always prefer to call it a Creta car, but that's.
Um, fair enough. Um. So are there? Are there other questions, um, for the applicant, uh, and their? Which is before we, um, go to public comment?
Um, Louise, can we go through the reports of, um, Justin?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
And, um, just to see if there's anything they, they're highlighting, we should either consider or they're recommending his comments.
Yep.
Uh, I'm happy to begin if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Uh, so my comments, I, I kind of structured them, the first six are about the ADA space, so I think we're good. Uh, the next couple are about the open space requirement, um. So I think it's still not very clear when this is off the page and, and built. And there for the next, you know, thirty, fifty, hundred years, uh, that that shared open space behind unit three does not belong to unit three. Um. The applicant said they, they're willing to add that pathway as they showed, uh, they mentioned a gate, um. I don't know if they said something about it not being locked or, or, uh, uh. Obviously, it shouldn't be locked to the, or it can't be locked to the other tenants, um. But also, unit three, uh, its rear entrance goes directly onto it, which I, I think also gives the, the, the view. I mean, that's what unit twos does to their private space, so.
Exactly, and I, I thought based on early, early in the meeting that we were inclined in. Uh, would be my inclination anyway, to, to designate that as unit three, private open space. Um, and give a variance for the shared open space. And is that a dr- that, yeah.
Yep, yeah, that addresses, I mean, as long as it's clear. And as long as Jerry, you, you described it before, but I think we would be able to do that.
Yes.
Based on the current noticing, okay. Um. And then just moving on, my, one of my other comments is about the landscape architects report, I think Mister, uh, uh, Dobremilsky will get to that, so that's about it for me.
Okay, thanks, Justin. Uh, Dan and Derek?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, everything, uh. So far tonight, uh, running through it again, I. Jerry, I don't know if you wanted to run through those, um.
If we could, Dan, that would be.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um. If you want, I'll jump right in, uh, there's the minimalist, uh, exception to residential site improvement standards, uh, which, uh, I talked about earlier. Um. There was a comment, uh, regarding floor area calculations, um. It's more of a clarification question, uh, that we can resolve during compliance, uh, but it's, it's compliant with FAR. Um, comment on open space, which we've talked about. Uh, reconstruction of the public sidewalk. Um. Details of long-term and short-term. Bicycle parking.
Where are you at, uh, Dan, in, in terms of your, um.
Page four. Page four, correct. Um.
Yeah, right.
We had talked about the fence between the ADA space and the, uh, expect, accessible route around that fence, that was discussed. Uh, the applicant provided testimony regarding the secondary sidewalk going from the larger parking area to the front. Um, so I think the board should just deliberate on that, uh. After public comment. Um, staff had requested, uh, the applicant provide details of the ADA parking sign. Um, Stafford requested, uh, the applicant provide details of the ADA parking sign. Um, Mr. Kennedy, is there any objection to providing the details for that?
Nope.
Thank you. Um, clarification for EV, uh, ready spaces is clarified that two spaces are to be provided. We talked about the gate going to the ADA space. Uh, the applicant clarified that curb stops would be provided at the two parking spaces adjacent to the proposed building. And then going to page five, uh, with the typical staff comments of, uh, the construction cost estimate for the installation of site and public improvements, as well as outside agency approvals. Um, and then there's a comment, just a minor comment regarding, uh, the signature block on sheet one of the simple drawings, and that was it.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Uh, Dan, if I could follow up on one of those, um, and this is why I kind of cautioned about designing on the fly, but is the gate gonna go back now that the ADA space is moving or is it still gonna be open?
Uh, speaking from the applicant, our preference would be if that were to be converted, if the board's preferences to grant a variance to down to five spaces. And for us to move the ADA space to the left, we'd like to return that gate for reasons that I think, uh, Mr. Lesko actually suggested made it perhaps challenging for a, um, for an ADA space, uh, might actually make it quite, um, beneficial, uh, as a, as a regular space private to that, to that unit. So we, our preference would be, uh, it should have returned to a regular space, non-tandem, uh, that the gate be returned.
Thank you. And then the doors would be to the steps leading to it? Not the windows behind it that we saw?
I'll let Marina, find the check that she could follow the, this is the connection to that unit, to that parking space is the question.
Um, so right now we have one operable door undercover. It is easier to have a door undercover for rain protection. However, if it's important and desirable by the board to provide the other one, that could be added as well. But it won't be undercover then.
Okay, the operable door, is that for unit three?
One.
One.
Oh, Brian, you, yeah.
Um, it seems a bit overkill to have two doors.
I, I think the one is fine, too.
Yeah.
Um, anything else, Mr. Lesko or Mr. Weissman? If not, um, Dan Dobremilsky?
Yes, hello again.
Um, hi.
I think I've heard that the applicant has been agreeable to most within the report, but Jerry, if it helps, I could go through them real quick.
Yeah, Dan, I think that'd be good.
So I think the first comment was talking about the potential for some additional, uh, trees on the property. And I think, uh, the applicant indicated willingness to look into that. Um, perhaps that could be a condition that, uh, if this does go to landscape subcommittee, that that could be reviewed there along with the municipal arborist, who I think ultimately will process whether there's mitigation trees required or not. Um, so that could be a condition, if that makes sense, for number one.
Yeah, they said they were, would add some arborite along the back fence, uh, as.
That could potentially, potentially solve the whole issue. Exactly. Um, and that gets into comments number two and three as well. So in comments two was talking about the fence and the adequacy of the fence. But if we're having arborite, that kind of makes the fence solid anyway. Um, so we could talk about the actual layout of those arborite to get the maximum screening for the units. Uh, particularly from the garage as they talked about. And then in comment three, um, that the comment three was talking about changing what they proposed as Japanese plum to the arborite. So two and three kind of combined together. And say that the applicant will consider using the arborite and it'll help with, in addition to the fence, to provide a screening. That's desirable along the back property, rock and side property. Does that make sense, Jerry?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Comment four was about the ground cover and that the, the need for native species ground. They, I think they agreed to that. They would make modifications to do that. Um, my comment five was to suggest using an alternate, um, species for the shade trees. Um, I, I incorrectly said it was an Armstrong cultivar they're proposing there. Actually, it's boholl, which is slightly wider than Armstrong, um, and preferable over Armstrong. But I suggested that there's a lot of red maple that's been planted and perhaps some other, um, species would be desirable. And I think they can, they said they were open-minded to that. So it could be a condition that, that be discussed and that the final selections um, either be approved by landscape subcommittee or the arborist or landscape architect, however you want to do that.
I think your suggestions of tupelo or willow oak were both very good.
Yeah, I think they would fit that space well.
Yeah.
So that.
And tupelo is spectacularly beautiful in the fall.
Right. And it doesn't get real, real wide. So I think it would fit. So that, that's, that's, this is a suggestion there. Comment six was the root barrier comment. And I think that could be handled by just having a note added to the plans indicating that they'll be deployed where appropriate with, as noted in my comment. Number seven, they would have to revise the plans so the planting schedule would include some additional size specifications. And number eight was just asking about the visibility of utility elements. And whether that needs to be reviewed. I think that could be, if the board agrees, could be handled by having a note on the plan indicating that those type of elements will be screened from public view, assuming that that's possible. So that's.
Just on the, on the issue of the fence, and I, I believe me not suggesting that we need to go into detail, you know, about every last uh, about minutia related to the fence, but I would like, um, to secure a commitment from the applicant to not use, to not erect a plastic fence. A PVC fence, which are common. And that, and that it be a wooden fence.
Yes.
Or something. Something that's not plastic.
Understood and.
No problem.
Well. You get that, Jerry?
Yep, I have it.
Okay, and do we, have we dealt with the, um, question or the issues raised, et cetera, in Mr. Anasik's, um, memo? Victor, do you have anything further?
Um, I think most of my comments have been deliberated on. And, uh, like, what a path. Uh, they, the second comment, uh, is similar to what Dan has in his uh, detail of the short-term and the long-term backing spaces. Um, comment number three about gavel collection and disposal process to testify, they have provided testimony. Um, number four talks about the size of the compact uh, space, design whether as required, uh, based on uh, deliberations, uh, it seems like, uh, the compact space might go away. So that might not be required anymore.
Yeah.
Is that true? I, I didn't, I didn't understand that.
Oh, I thought it was true.
That the handicap loading space doesn't need to be as wide as a parking space, which would alleviate the width constraints on the compact space.
I see. So the can't, compact space would be increasing size. Okay.
Yes.
We, we, we believe we can do that. We, that we need to make sure that the, we do get, we do gain an extra two feet through that, uh, but the, the chatter on our side is that, uh, we'll, we're, we'll work towards that. That may still not be a full nine by nineteen space there.
Well.
Nine by eighteen.
You want to go with the work towards that? I mean, we've heard a lot of language about that. I would just say they have to do it.
Uh, comment number five is related to to number four. If you, if you're providing a compact space, uh, um, recommending that they put a pavement marking, because sometimes what happens is the bigger vehicles use that space and they kind of, uh, occupy part of the regular space and makes that a space, uh, very insecure to use.
So you think the pavement marking works better than a, than signage that says?
Yeah, signage or some kind of marking, it's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Some signage, yeah.
Yep.
And then the ADA handicap pavement symbol or, or the signpost should be placed at the designated ADA space.
Mm-hmm.
And then number seven, uh, I think we'll kind of agree that the ADA space as is presently shown should be relocated to the open, uh, parking lot.
Right.
So, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Great. Are we ready to, to go to public comment? Mr. Cohen, you've had?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one more comment about the bike parking, which is, um, you know, I think that the overhang by unit one with its private car parking also has a really good opportunity for a couple of private bike parking spots. And so, rather than, you know, building a new overhang and worrying about having to give a side yard variance on the other side where we were talking about, I would say, put a couple of covered spaces for unit one and then, you know, get up to a total of eight spaces. I think you can do that between a couple by unit one and six inside. Uh, uh, where it's currently shown and that we don't really need to add more covered parking outside.
Even if it's a freestanding?
Yeah, it's a great suggestion.
I, I just think it's.
I mean, it's two, two bikes per unit. I, I completely, I'm thinking also about people who visit.
Well, they, they don't need covered parking and we've already got.
Oh, okay.
Spot for that out front.
Okay, okay. So there's there's bike, um, parking facilities that are uncovered that are outside the building right now? Cause I.
Yes.
Okay, all right. I missed that. Good, thanks.
And just to clarify on the bike parking, so that the proposed ramp won't interfere with the outside bike parking? And that might be a question for.
It'll require to be reconfigured likely, slightly, with the number would remain the same. It may shift over to the other side of the back door.
And thank you.
Bike parking is, outdoor bike parking is identified, but we're not gonna have it other than the spaces that we just articulated by, uh, David?
No, I mean, there will still be other outside bike parking, but it won't be covered.
Okay.
And it may need to be relocated or some adjustment based on the ramp situation that Paulie just reminded us of.
Okay.
Um, okay, with that, I will, um, open the meeting for public comment. This is, uh, we have eight, still eight members of the public, um.
Louise?
Any of, yes.
Would you like me to go through my, the conditions in addition to what we've all discussed that are in my, um, notes?
Well, don't we usually do that after public comment? Yeah, let's, let's wait. Let's, let's listen to what folks have to say and then, cause it might, we might.
Yeah.
Add something. Okay. Um, members of the public, if you would like to address the board, now is the time, uh, to uh, click on the raise hand icon or reactions or whatever your Zoom screen says. Um, on mine, it's raise hand. Uh, if anybody wishes to speak, I'm not seeing any hands go up. So I'll just, uh, say going once, going twice. All right, there's no, um, no public comment on this application tonight, so I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Um, so yes, Jerry, um, do your thing.
Okay. Obviously, we've gone through a number of, of conditions, uh, in the memos. Now, did the plan show that, that those two spaces are make-ready? They do show that those spaces are make-ready. It's already shown in the plans, right? Yep.
Sorry, it's shown in what we.
It's shown in exhibits.
Tonight.
Oh, right, right.
It'll need to be added to the actual plans and compliance.
Right. They shown in A1.
Um, Ms. Anderson, Claudia's got her hand up, too.
May I just ask a question? Uh, Paulie just mentioned the ramp. Is it an option and do we care if the developer chose to install an outdoor wheelchair lift instead of this forty-foot long ramp? Does it really matter how the handicap person would access the building?
I don't know what, um, what the law requires.
I was just wondering.
So I, I mean, I don't know the answer to your question. Maybe, um, maybe Dan Weissman does or Mr. Kennedy or Mr. Muller, but, um, I know just, you know, from people who use walkers or crutches, the, the ramp is more helpful maybe than a lift. Uh, so I would think that a ramp, and, and also a ramp is not subject to technical, you know, breakdowns and such. But I don't know the answer, you know, the yes or no answer.
Can we have an answer? I, I think that's a really.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Marina, it's got your hand up. Do you, do you know?
Um, we're legally required to provide wheelchair accessible entrance to the building. If you would like to leave it open to the applicants to figure out exactly how they do that or we do that. Um, that would give us the flexibility. Normally, if possible, we do prefer to have a ramp for the reasons that, um, were described, to avoid them breaking down, avoid feeling people uneasy using them. But if all else fails, if it ends up being too long, um, if you would like to leave it open for, um, a possibility of having some form of a lift, I don't think there would be any objections to that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable with that. It just needs to comply with the ADA.
We, we.
Obviously.
Engines, there are no two ways around it.
Yeah, right. Thanks for bringing that up, Claudia. Um, go ahead, Mr. Muller.
And curb stops for the two, uh, EV-ready spaces.
Yeah.
And it's a question of the bird safe glass. Ms. Rabina said, um, you know, they don't know if they can afford it, but I, I don't think it's a criteria that the, the board should consider for an applicant to come in and say, well, you want me to do X, Y, and Z, but I can't do any of that because it's too expensive. Um, so if the board thinks it's reasonable, I would say impose it.
How do people feel about that? I mean, I, I my concern is I, I don't, I, I don't have strong feelings about requiring a um, bird safe glass. You know, that costs four times as much as a regular pane, but I, but I know from investigating it myself that there are a lot of ways to make, so, so one way or the other, I do think that, um, that the applicant should show how they will uh, address that, whether it's with bird safe glass panes or some, some, you know, um, decals, et cetera, the kinds of things that people use to make regular panes bird safe.
We, we'd certainly be willing to take mitigating measures, uh, just to, if it were to be imposed to, to actually use a certain product, we would, I, I would have to try to object to that, but.
Well, I don't think from an environmental standpoint, we're asking for a specific product, but I think that the, we're asking that it be achieved. But at the same time, I agree with Jerry. I don't think, uh, we can't afford it. Defense is a valid defense for this. I mean, you know, you can say that for almost anything.
I, I'll just add, it's, it's not in the ordinance, uh, with, that the, um, we've come with a compliant project and this is not a function that's related to any of the, the site issues that we've discussed. I certainly understand the board, the board's preference and just reiterate our, our willingness to achieve some type of compliance, uh, whether it's in the glass or with an aftermarket product.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, Ryan.
Public sidewalk will be reconstructed. Hold on, excuse me. After construction is completed. What we said is, sorry, painting accessible path, but. I think that's. Hold on one second. Okay. Do we want to get this specific? Open space adjunit, adjacent to unit three. Make it unit three, open space and variance from the common open space requirement.
Yes.
Okay. So that'd be the second variance. The first variance is the parking variance.
Right.
And the open space variance, I think would essentially equal. The requirement, which I think is sixteen hundred minus whatever that. Rear yard one would have been.
Okay, then put a gate by the original ADA space. It's now going to be a conventional space. Not a, a non tandem space. So that's one, then one operable door, operable door for unit one. Wooden, not plastic fence. Outdoor parking under overhang for unit one and six inside.
And that's bike parking, Jerry.
Oh, I thought that, oh, I must have not said something. Outdoor bike parking under overhang for unit one plus six. Bike, bike space inside, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say. Sorry. And they shown outdoor space and, and, and keep. They shown outdoor spaces, which may have to be relocated because of any ramp or the ramp.
Right, yeah, outdoor bike, bike parking spaces, yeah.
And that's, that's what I have.
Okay. Just one question. There was, I think, I think there was a suggestion in somebody's memo about adding. A, at least one tree along the street. Now, in one of the images I saw. Multi, multi stemmed, small trees in front of unit one. I'm wondering. I think that there, there seems to be ample room between the dedicated sidewalk and the public sidewalk. To put a, a street tree. I don't want to complicate things since the, since the grading and ramp situation. You know, is a, a little bit up in the air, but. Another condition I would like to have is that this come to the landscape committee. And that the applicant consider a tree along the street. Because right now there's just, you know, that, that is, you know, very. Exposed, you know, it just seems like a, a, a street tree would be nice along there, especially since there are no. Power lines on that side of the street and. It, it's, there's space for. A nice big street tree potentially. So if you'll consider it and we will look at it at landscape committee, that would be, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, and then that's not in your report, correct?
It was in my report.
Oh, it was.
Yeah, it's under the, the suggestion for some additional trees, one up front and a couple in the back.
I really agree, Louise, strongly. I thank you for bringing that up, yeah.
Okay.
Justin?
And Madam Chair, one other.
More specifically, just to add, regains, an additional tree could, well, could be added. Now it would be. Let's be added. In the front yard and a couple of trees could be added in the rear yard.
Right, I think the rear yard, we were talking about the arbor body may take the place of those, but in the front, we could fit an additional tree and.
Have any idea, the species?
It would be same as the others or similar to the others, the ones that we suggested elsewhere in the report.
Tupelo, Willow Oak.
The
Those names in there, you can just say as suggested.
It's a shade tree, right?
Yes.
The, the one image shows the small trees in front of the building like you indicated, but that, that, what they're actually proposing are small shrubs there. They won't look exactly like that image was shown.
And that's what I thought, looking at that, yeah. Justin?
Yes, Madam Chair, that rendering that you mentioned also showed. Green space in front of the wall in front of the overhang. You know, maybe it's another six feet by four feet or something like that, so. I don't, and that's not shown on the site plan or on the architectural plan. So I don't know if that's something you want to give the applicant the leeway to incorporate in. Through a comment or if you want to kind of require that they harmonize things, but obviously rings aren't always one to one.
Yeah, but that's a very good point, Justin, and what we've done in the past. When an applicant has submitted this kind of presentation, we, we say the, the plans have to be revised to, so they're consistent with the, the presentation. That sound acceptable to everybody?
Sure. Except we're asking. We are asking for other changes that are not consistent with the presentation, so.
Yeah, I don't know that you can do that. I think you gotta. Relative to the ramp and everything is not going to always look like what they showed you tonight.
That's right. Yeah, that's right. So never mind what I said.
But we're going to have the landscape committee.
Review, yes.
This landscape architect. Review the plans, review the landscape plans.
Yeah.
And they'll be subject. And will, and. They will. Be subject. To its approval. Okay.
So with those conditions as itemized by Jerry, is there? A motion?
Plus, obviously, the preliminary final major site plan and the two variances. Is there a waiver? No, we
I don't think so, no.
Parking waivers for the residential site improvement standard.
Okay, well, those, yeah.
Two parking waivers, or one was for the compact spot which may go away.
Been eliminated. Yeah, and these would just be exceptions rather than waivers. Exceptions, exceptions from the, the minimalist exceptions from the RSIS. Okay.
Right, so the motion would be approval of this PIP commercial major site plan with the variances as, and conditions as discussed.
Right.
I'm moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who did that.
Nat.
Nat, thank you, Nat. Moved by Nat Bodikheimer, seconded by Mia Sacks. Carrie, do the honors, please.
Mr. Bodikheimer.
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Nuka.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Ms. Perlmutter.
Yes.
Ms. Sacks.
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, everybody. And we meet again next week. Hopefully, well, I'm not even going to say it. Any other comments for the good of the order before Mr. Cohen does his duty?
I, I wanted to ask the applicant, I think Nat had a question. What was your question, Nat? You wanted to know if the applicant was listening to us with, with, out of the goodness of their heart? Was that your question? Now that they're no longer on the record, I thought it would put them on the spot.
Well, actually, may I not answer that question, but provide a somewhat interesting comment. That it has come to my attention that in September twenty twenty three, there was a change to the rules regarding RSIS. And the parking standards in our RSIS are no longer the minimum. They're now the maximum. I'd be happy to provide the document, so it is a very exciting state of affairs in the state of New Jersey that residential site improvement. Standards are no longer required. So municipality is totally allowed to be in their ordinances, providing. Fewer parking spaces than in RSIS. And in fact, if they would like to ask for more, you have to submit documentation why you're providing more parking spaces.
That's remarkable. I have, I have no idea.
So two good news is today, one is parking, not sorry, parking of, based on RSIS. And the second one, you know, recycling for number five containers. I mean, like. Can it be more exciting than December twelfth, twenty twenty four? So I'm happy to share the information, but I am so thrilled about the RSIS updates. I just can't help but share.
Now, if they would just let go of stormwater.
I have to say, when you circulate that, if you could add me to the list of people being receiving it, that'd be great.
I would prefer to send it to Justin and then Justin will send it to everybody.
Thank you for sharing, Marina. That checks off the box as one of our master plan goals.
Yay.
And I have to say, I raised, I raised to the Mercer County Recycling website to check out the number fives. It hasn't changed there yet. I don't know when.
Well, Ryan has the actual brochure.
They have a separate flyer that they're distributing. I'll get that to you so you can see it. It's, it's not made their master list. But they have circulated a number five immediately graphic. So I'll send that to you.
Fantastic, thank you.
That's really a big deal.
We had an exciting day today, but thank you.
David, I'm begging you now.
I'm ready. I move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, I.
Good night.
Night, everybody. Thank you very much. See you next week.
Bye.